Okay, let me say good afternoon to all of those of you who are here on this warm. It's not quite summertime yet, is it? But it's the last day of May, so summertime is officially close. Thank you all for being here. This is a special budget meeting that we're having today as part of our work session. Our main work session will begin at six o'clock. And so two of our council members today are with us virtually. That would be our Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Elmo Vance, and also Councilmember Kathy Behringer. I would remind both of them, as they participate in the meeting today, you should be able to identify yourselves. I guess you need to leave your video on probably, so we'll count on you doing that. Can you hear us okay, both of you?
Yes, clearly.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so first item of business is call the meeting to order, which we have done, and we'll jump right into our agenda. Those of you who are in the audience, I'm sure you have access to that or can get a copy if you need one. The first item on our agenda is a budget recap, and I'm going to call on our town manager, Mr. Rodney Dickerson, who will lead us through that process. Mr. Dickerson.
All right. Yes.
Technically, because this is a remote meeting, we have to call the roll.
Oh, excuse me.
So if you'd like, I can do that for you.
Okay, if you don't mind.
Mayor Marshburn.
Okay, present.
Mayor Pro Tem Vance.
Present.
Councilwoman Behringer.
Here.
Councilman Dellinger.
Here.
Councilman Matthews.
Here.
And Councilman Singleton.
Here.
And so for the record, four members are present in chambers and two are participating remotely.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. All right.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Town Council, before I get started, just wanted to mention that you have some handouts before you. One is the updated CIP, and then you also have the slides that we're going to be presenting from. You have a copy of that. Plus, there's a couple of in-large sheets at the very end of the slide deck just showing you some of the tax comparison scenarios for the region and just for property tax revenue scenarios. And then the two that are with us virtually, you should have those electronically that were sent to you just shortly. And with that, what I'm going to do is just real quickly, just give you an overview of the budget summary, kind of similar to last time, but since this has been covered already, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. This is just a matter to just kind of set the stage of where we are. So the FY 22-23 budget is just over $48 million, 11.9% increase. It was challenging because of some uncertainty. You know, revenues are based on the tax increase, sales growth, and other avenues, including one-time funding. I know a lot of times the public and others see all the growth we have and equate that to a pretty quick turnaround on revenues. But we showed you some information last time that showed that it could take as much as four years from the time a project comes to the town, initially comes to the town, and we start seeing the tax revenue from that. The thing about it, we have to provide services to those projects pretty much as soon as they get here or they're submitted to the town, because we have to review the plans and do inspections and all those different type of things. On page three, the budget highlights, it does include a tax rate increase of two cents that was planned per the bond referendum, and we advertised that as we went around and gave out information about the bond. So that would make the tax rate 53.21 cent per $100 of valuation. We also are going to use some one-time funding. That's going to help with some of our repair and maintenance, technology, and some public safety equipment. And when we first got our initial run of the budget and we started analyzing the expenditures and the revenues, we realized we needed to go back and have departments make some cuts. So it does include $2.1 million in cuts, and that equates to 2.9% of the operating budget. We were not able to fund a lot of new initiatives in this budget. We are including 15 new firefighters for Station Five, and that's 10 months of funding, and that will help them get through the fire academy in time for the opening of the new station. And then we had five decision packages funded that were focused on public safety. Revenues, like I said, I won't go back through this, but basically $48 million based on a two-cent tax increase from different sources, other revenues from different sources. Expenditures, the 15 firefighters, realizing that the cost of fuel affects the town just like it does others, so fuel is up. It's something we use a lot of, as well as commodities, just with the inflation and those type of things, the cost of items are up. We got two town newly funded items, so some life safety equipment, technology needs, and fire inspection staffing. So we are proposing to hire a fire inspector for half a year as one of our new employees. And we are experiencing slightly higher health costs, insurance costs, and retirement contributions. Retirement contribution is a planned increase, one of several. We've had some before this year, and there's more to come as the Treasury and the retirement system try to make the system solvent, the retirement system solvent. So 4% merit increase is included for performance, and we will be doing a town-wide pay-in class study moving forward, which was a recommendation from our last pay-in class study, how we fund that, depending on what the recommendations are. That's yet to be determined. Included in the funding request, a fire inspector mid-year, some of the life safety and public safety things, TASER replacement, response team rifles, the police reorg, which has already partially been put into place, police laptop replacement, and IT revolving capital fund to replace some of our important infrastructure, technology infrastructure. Did include a 2.9% reduction, and you can see those reductions on pages nine through 11 in the budget summary. There were a total of 2.18 decision packages, dollars, 2.18 million dollars in decision packages that were unfunded, and you can see that list on pages 12 through 13. The fund balance at the end of FY 2021 totaled 13.34 million. We project that the unassigned fund balance for the year we're currently in will be about 14 million, which is 30% of budgeted revenues. You do have a policy of adhering to keep a 30% fund balance as a normal goal. FY 22-23 budget includes $600,000 of unassigned fund balance, and that's to offset an increase in employee-dependent healthcare coverage, the ARP fund balance for the repair and maintenance program, and then a replacement vehicle and capital equipment of $196,000. And to continue with the fund balance, we use some water sewer balance for the capital reserve capacity fee, debt service, some police asset forfeiture for some police items, PAL bill balance utilized to meet street maintenance requirements, inspections revenue to purchase a vehicle for the new fire inspector, revenue savings plan used for debt service per our model, our financial model, per Davenport, our financial advisors, and CARES funding for IT revolving capital program of $170,000. Next, we turn to the revenue savings plan. We're calculating that $2.9 million will be contributed to the FY 22-23 plan. If you remember from last year, we were able to appropriate $350,000 permanently and redirect that to support the cost of the bond requirements, and so that's been backed out of there. We will fully utilize 1.292 of the planned reserve for existing debt service in FY 22-23. So the total reserved in the plan will total $7.8 million after FY 22-23 transfer. We do have some proposed fee changes, and we went over those over the last few months. We brought to council some activity fee changes in Parks and Rec, and those were shared in February. And then those changes, some changes included in the budget on page 31 through 35, there's a fee schedule in there, and you can see some of the changes. Those have been, the track changes will show you where some of the changes are. A lot of them focus on equity between residents and non-residents, so that's one of the things that the Parks and Rec tried to achieve as they looked at the different rate structures. The budget work session, we had some follow-up items. Update the CIP to include projects yet to be funded, so there was about two or three projects that were not in there. Update the multi-year model. We're going to be looking at that, I think, at least up to two years. And provide revenue charts for 3.5 cents, 4 cents, and 4.5 cents tax increases, and then we will update the model to show those three different scenarios. And then recommendation for the revenue savings plan adjustment options for operating needs. We'll have some discussion about that. And a public information strategy for final budget decisions. So with that, that's kind of a quick overview of where we are, and we'll entertain any questions and move forward with the next section on multi-year model.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dickerson. And yeah, we'll give council opportunities. They have preliminary questions. I'm sure there'll be some along the way, but I might start with Mr. Matthews on my left, if he has any questions he'd like to...
Nothing right now, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. ...
I will later.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let me go to our virtual council members. I'll go to Mr. Vance.
No questions at this time.
And Ms. Behringer.
No questions.
Okay, and Mr. Dellinger.
I'm not going to.
Okay, all right. Okay, Mr. Manager, thank you for your initial presentation there. Ready for our finance director, Mr. Beck. Good to see you, sir.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon to you all. So we are going to run through some of the various multimodal scenarios. We received direction from council, as mentioned previously, to look at the model using a variety of potential tax rates, beginning with FY 23 budget. This just highlights what the additional revenue would be. The key thing to note here is that the two pennies for debt service is already programmed in the FY 23 budget, so this is what the additional above that would generate. So the three-and-a-half cent increase, an additional penny and a half on the two that's already there, would give you about $800,000. So we highlighted those three options that came up during the last work session for council to consider as we go forward. We updated the effective tax rate information that was available. All municipalities have information available at this time, other than Knightdale. We do have their proposed tax rate information, but we did not have their full, access to their full budget document at this time, so that has not been fully updated. But you see, even with the proposed two-cent tax increase here in Garner, along with other tax rate increases, fee increases in other municipalities, Garner still has the lowest overall tax burden in the county. One thing to note here, just kind of doing the math on this, Garner's tax rate could go up another five cent above the two pennies that's in the budget currently, and it would still be the lowest in the county. So you would have to go over another five cent or more over the current tax rate to move off of that lowest effective rate in the county. So we'll go through a few of the assumptions that are in the multi-year model. We did expand the model to include two additional years, so it now projects out through FY 27. The tax base growth is based on projections of around 6% over the next two years and then 7% in the following two years. We do have a planned three-and-a-half cent tax increase in fiscal year '24 that's programmed into the model. Most of the revenue categories are based on a 1% to 3% annual growth rate. We have 4% programmed in for sales tax and 10% for building permit fees. And the multi-year model does not appropriate any fund balance as, you know, a funding mechanism for any one-time purchases or either as a budget balancing method. So assume that no fund balance is appropriated, so it gives you a true look at what the surplus or deficit could potentially be. The expenditure side, some of the assumptions, we looked at a 4% year-over-year increase in personnel costs and related benefits, 5% in the cost of group insurance. Our retirement rates are based on the current elders' sort of tiered increase structure they have in place. We have estimated an average of 13 new employees townwide annually in the next four years. And we did plug in $500,000 in fiscal year '24 to implement the results of the upcoming pay-in class study. For the operating line items, we've utilized, you know, current forecast would available, a 3% annual increase for most of the baseline operating line items like supplies and things like that. We base that on a five-year CPI average of about 2.9%. The fiscal year '24 projection has most of the baseline items going up 6%, so that is to sort of recapture the almost 3% that was cut in the proposed FY 23 budget, and then also add on that escalator or inflationary factor. For debt service, we have included debt on the existing bonds, as well as the new bonds that will be sold as part of the 2021 referendum. We added additional capacity for the two-thirds bonds debt that Davenport presented recently. There's also potential installment financings for town hall campus renovations, which would include the Forest Hills building, town hall, potentially the bank building, and then also financing the town's cost to purchase the downtown parking deck from the developer. So all of that debt is included in the model now. Going to go through the next two slides pretty quick. This is just the summary of the model, and this is the baseline model, which is based on the two-cent tax increase in fiscal year '23 for debt service, and then a planned three-and-a-half cent in '24 for operations. Go ahead. And here you sort of see the bottom line impact of what the updated assumptions do to the model, as well as, like I said, just knowing that the revenue assumptions are based on a two-cent tax increase in '23 and three-and-a-half in '24. And you see that we have some fairly significant deficits still, you know, ranging from, you know, four... ...tax rate equivalent, eight-and-a-half cents. And then there's the tax base equivalent, which was, you know, what you would need to add to cover that deficit as well. So that's the baseline projection based on the current proposed budget, also anticipating that three-and-a-half cent increase next year. Then we went back and ran the model using a variety of tax rates for fiscal year '23, and this sort of just boils down what the bottom line looks like on all of those various models. So the top couple of rows there, you have the baseline numbers, which we just looked at, which has a two-cent tax increase in fiscal year '23. Then we looked at the model as far as what the numbers would look like with a three-and-a-half cent tax increase in '23, a four-cent tax increase in '23, and a four-and-a-half cent tax increase in '23. And you see that, you know, each of those incrementally bring down the deficit to some degree, but there's still a deficit there. And again, just noting that all of these models, even with a four-and-a-half cent tax increase in '23, are still based on an additional three-and-a-half cent increase in '24. Be glad to answer any questions about the model y'all may have, or any of the assumptions, anything along those lines.
Okay, we'll do that. I have a couple of questions, David, and you don't have to get into much detail. The under-personnel model, your model assumptions includes 13 new townwide FTEs annually. Is that projected out through 2027?
Right. It's 13 each year through 2027, so just sort of an average of, you know, an average. So, you know, there could be a year where you may have 16, you may have 12, but that's what we felt was a reasonable average estimate over the next four years.
And that was spread across, I guess, all town departments, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we went back and had all the department heads update their five-year staffing plan, and we got a list, and from that, we extrapolated that it would take an average of 13 per year. Now, we have not vetted each and every one of the positions. You know, that's something we would do from year to year. Some would naturally, you know, not be hired at that time. Some would, just depending on what the needs are for the organization and prioritizing. But that's just kind of the raw data. As you remember, the previous model, I think it had six, and so going back and updating those, it's, we got 13 positions per year on average.
And I'm not suggesting that the need is probably not there, but is that amount of, you know, growth a little higher than it has been in more recent times? I guess that's...
Employee growth?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, definitely. With the exception of the year we're in, I don't know what the average was, but we were probably doing, I don't know, four or five town employees per year, somewhere around there. And then last year, I think we got up to 20, I forgot what the total was, 20-something.
It gets 20, and then we've had some mid-year additions this year as well.
I had one other question, but I lost my note on that. So I'll go to council members. Okay, I'll start on this end with Mr. Dellinger, if he has questions.
What's the next property reevaluation year, and then where, how long would it take for that to play into increasing revenue? It's like two years off or something. I can't remember. It knows every four years, but do we know when it...
Yeah, the next reval year is '24, I believe, and it would have an impact on the fiscal year '24 budget.
Another question was, the model is sort of, again, sort of being built from an internal perspective to look at costs and estimating costs for the budget, but have you gone in yet and sort of looked at the timing of all these projects and units coming online and contributing, based on, I think, some of the charts we had in the last meeting? And it was, you kind of could predict when some of these subdivisions were being, you know, coming online and starting to issue COs. So have we done sort of a comparison to see what we project that... So have we done sort of a comparison to see what we project that revenue generation to be and sort of see how it lines up with what we're projecting our expenses to be?
For the revenue side, we have asked for additional information from Wake County before as far as sort of what they use for the base projections, and they don't really get drilled down into that much detail on particular subdivisions or things like that. They sort of look at average, the average value added to the tax base year-to-year. So we could, you know, potentially, you know, tweak the estimates they give us, but they've been so close in prior years, it's really, there's sort of the comfort level of how much do you base on, you know, our internal projections versus what they give us. So, you know, there's potentially room there to, you know, like I said, tweak their estimates, but based on what they've given us in prior years and where we land with the actual revenues, it's so close that it seems like they're pretty spot-on with the method that they're using.
You don't use that to project forward, though, right?
Yeah, and they don't really, other than the next fiscal year, they don't project forward either. I mean, they just don't have really the capacity to do that with having to do it for all the municipalities.
Yeah, and that's the thing, I think we need to have a little more communication between finance and our projections and planning, because we know we have 8,000 homes that are going to be built. We can sort of guesstimate, we can even go and drive an eyeball, or, I mean, I can go down in Ackerman in that area and see that their house is coming out of the ground and maybe estimate on a quarterly basis, like, how many of these homes are now on our tax roll, will be on our tax rolls and say, this one's moving pretty fast. And it won't be perfect, but I think from what we had last time, there's going to be this ramp-up. It's very steep for projects, they kind of all started at different times, but they're kind of coalescing into '24, '25, and '26. And this is, the model, I think, is good. Most of the assumptions are solid. The 3% base increase, I think, could be a little higher, but I think we want to, because these numbers look very daunting, these deficits, but they look daunting because we don't know what, we're not projecting revenue, right? We're not projecting when we're going to have additional revenue coming in from the growth that we've already approved. So these numbers don't really bother me, but I think we could get some comfort and ease if we had some idea of when we're going to start generating revenue in, over this kind of four-year window, which doesn't help us right now, but I think in the future it'd be helpful to see when those projects are coming online. I'll let somebody else ask a question, but...
In that regard, does the modeling sort of assume, that's a terrible word, I guess, you know, a percentage-based rate of revenue increase, or how is that factored into the mix?
It does. So, you know, as far as tax, the tax growth is based on, you know, the growth of the tax base itself, and so, you know, it's roughly 6% to 7% per year is what we have in the model currently. And then other revenues, you know, grow at various rates depending on what we feel like the best estimates are on projections going forward.
I'll next go to Ms. Behringer, if you have a question.
I do have one question. The 20 positions that had to be filled last year, was that 20 new positions or vacancies as well as new positions? Because 20 sounds overwhelming, but if we were filling vacancies, it's not quite as overwhelming.
Those were new positions added.
Okay. Well, we are growing, aren't we? Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Vance, any questions, sir?
Not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Singleton?
To clarify, some of those positions were part-time positions that we made full-time positions.
Correct.
Okay, so the new positions, but they're not, we just, when I made new positions, we converted part-time positions. I know we didn't in public works, and we also did it in...
Typically in parks and rec. We have some of that, too.
We've done some of that. So they're new positions, but we converted full-time to part-time. Okay. And in your assumption here on the '24 budget, which will be revale, nothing in that, this is just using the numbers you have now, because revaluation is nothing, we know what it's going to be, so that's not even used in here, correct?
Yeah, it just assumes revenue neutral and then the 3.5 cent tax increase. So as far as, you know, actual revenue back to the town, it kind of assumes that we would be revenue neutral or close to it.
That's for right now, Mayor.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Matthews?
Wait for the next slide. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Everybody good?
Good.
All right, thanks.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, and members of council. I'm going to go over the next few slides for you, and this is a follow-up to our conversation on the May 12 budget work session. One of the options that we were asked to present was potential options for additional revenue outside of the 2 cent that's already been planned for next year's budget. So one of the options is a tax increase, and that would be above the 2 cents that was planned and already included in next year's budget. You saw the previous slide, the council specifically wanted to see additional revenue at 3.5 cent, 4 cent, and 4.5 cents, and that's the information that's been provided to you, not only in the slides, but I believe we also have a single slide that's kind of blown up for you as well. In addition to a tax increase conversation the council had during your budget work session, we also talked about opportunities to adjust and work with our revenue savings plan as a way to help fund our operating costs. And if you recall, all the information that we provided to you showed the issues that we're having as far as operations and that structural imbalance we have in funding the operations. So one of the options for consideration for the council is if there's consensus among the council to provide a tax increase over the 2 cent that's already been planned and included in the recommended budget, would be to exclude this from the revenue savings plan for next year. This would be the recommendation of the budget team, if there's consensus among the council members to do this, and it's consistent with your practice in the past to exclude operating costs from the revenue savings plan. And so that would be an opportunity to provide some additional revenue in next year's budget. In addition to sort of the immediate, or what we're calling a short-term strategy on the revenue savings plan, we could also look at doing more longer-term adjustments to the revenue savings plan. And what we would propose to do there is to work with the town's financial advisors, Davenport, to come back to the council and fall in 2022 to recommend some additional longer-term strategies that really helps us address this structural deficit issue that we're facing as we continue to provide high-quality services and keep up with the growth that we're seeing. And then the third item that the council talked about in terms of revenue options is continuing to look at and leverage our one-time funding options to see how they can help us with some of those one-time costs and needs within our budget, looking at using some fund balance, some ARP, and also our healthcare rebate. You know that we've included those in next year's recommended budget, but looking at opportunities to use them in future budgets, but more importantly, how do we leverage them on those one-time costs that we have for future budgets. So part of our discussion today from the budget team's standpoint is really getting direction from the council on where you'd like to head next as far as our discussions and where you would like to see us go in preparing the budget ordinance, which we have targeted for your June 6 meeting. So the first question would be, is there consensus among the council to do an increase above the 2 cents that's planned and already included in next year's budget? You can see the chart on the screen. Provide you what the additional revenue would look like if it were 3.5 cent, a 4, or 4.5 cent. That would be additional revenue that would be available. And if the council decided to move forward with an additional increase in taxes, the recommendation of the budget team would be to take this additional revenue and to use it for some of the operating costs that have been cut. As you were aware, in order to balance next year's budget with the projected revenue, we had to cut about $2.1 million or about almost 3% of the operating budget in order to balance it. And so our recommendation would be to reinstate some of those cuts, specifically some of the ones that are more public-facing for services, things like being able to reinstate the, a lot of the mulch contract and be able to do more mulching at our parks and public facilities. Reinstating our snow removal budget, we had to completely zero that out, so to make sure if we have any winter storms next year, we're prepared for that. Provide some additional funding for our sidewalk maintenance program, we had to cut that program as well in order to balance the budget. And then our final recommendation would be to reinstate also some dollars for travel and training for staff. It's important to make sure our staff are well-trained for the jobs and responsibilities that we're asking them to do. In addition to consideration of an additional tax increase over the 2 cents, as the council had discussed during your budget work session, also consideration of excluding any additional increase over that 2 cents that was planned from the revenue savings plan. And as you heard me mention earlier, this is a common practice that the council has done in the past as it relates to tax increases related to operating costs. So that's our short-term strategies as we think about getting to next year's budget. But at our budget work session, we also talked about some future strategies, because as we know, we have a operating deficit that it's going to take more than a fiscal year for us to address. So some of the future strategies that we're recommending, as I mentioned before, is coming back to the council in the fall with more longer-term strategies or adjustments that could be made to the revenue savings plan that could really help us start addressing some of these longer-term operational deficits, and this would be in partnership with our financial advisor, Davenport. We would continue our mid-year revenue strategy. This will be done in the December-January timeframe, and if revenue projections, if we're outpacing what we projected and there's additional revenue, coming back to the council with additional recommendations for how that revenue may be used. And that we'd look at doing that, as we mentioned, in the winter of 2023. In addition to this mid-year review, conducting a town-wide service and contracts review and bringing the results of that back to the council in the wintertime of 2023, this will help us look for additional efficiencies and cost savings for any of our current contracts and services and provide an opportunity for us to report back to council on any potential recommendations we may have going into the following fiscal year's budget process. And then the final would be to continue to enhance our one-time funding strategies. This is an ongoing process. This really looks at building the infrastructure for applying for grants, looking for federal earmarks, applying for other funding opportunities, and making sure when those opportunities are available, that we are ready to pursue them and are able to leverage a lot of the general fund dollars for these projects as well. So Mayor, I'm going to turn the meeting back over to you for additional questions of the budget team on the information that's been presented today. We also have a short break plugged into this today as well, if we need to do that, and then opportunity for council discussion and additional Q and A with staff. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Miller. And our objective today is to finish this session by around 5:30, I believe. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And then we'll pause for a break. Okay, okay. Okay.
We also have, not to get them confused, we do have an intermediate break prior to that, if needed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not the 5:30 break.
I got you. Okay, thanks. Thanks much. Okay. My questions for now, and see what council questions you have. Mr. Singleton, I'll start with you this time.
Do you really think we're ready to approve the budget next Monday? Let's be honest. We're sitting here discussing this, and we're talking about in six days approving the budget. I think it should be moved to the second meeting.
We've had discussions to that nature. We know that you might need more time, so it's just not on here, but that's always an option. This is just the best-case scenario, but it's always an option to approve it at the second meeting.
I would recommend.
I would think there's merit in considering that, sure enough.
Oh, right now.
Mr. Vance, questions, sir?
No questions at this time.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir. The revenue savings plan, I know we talked about that at our budget meeting, and it got quite a bit of discussion about it, and I know you guys, we need to talk to Davenport, and I know you've addressed it to some extent here, and I'm just trying to wrap my arms around this thing, you know. It's hard for me to envision putting money in savings when we've got a deficit that we need to address. Have you guys talked this a little bit more in detail? Because I know we have fund balance, but the revenue savings plan, in my opinion, is something above and beyond, and it's hard to explain to the taxpayer, we're going to put money in savings, but same time raise your taxes. Any of y'all want to address that?
Let me go with it. This is simple. The revenue savings plan will pay for the $69 million that was approved in bond referendum. Nothing else needed. It'll pay for all of that. Now, it don't pay for personnel, the man that you have to add in operations. The revenue savings program by itself, if you do nothing else, will pay when the bonds are sold at $69 million plus interest, it pays for all of it. It's already programmed. It's programmed to pay $100 million, it will do the, whenever you build, we decided to do, have to do with the public works facility, it's unable to do that. You don't have to touch it. The money will come in, and it will pay for all those capital projects. It's there. You just have to remember that. Now, if you didn't have it, you could say, well, we're going to raise taxes 5 cent this year, and we're going to build this, 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 and this, which you could. So what the plan was, and when Mr. Kane designed it, no one knew the growth would take off the way it has, but operations can't keep up, and because the cost of everything, including the cost of staff and personnel, is increased so rapidly, that's what's one of the biggest effects on the budget. Here's something that, this is staggering. I read Kerry's budget this weekend. One penny in Garner raises $550,000, right?
$532,000 or something.
$532,000. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for correcting me. And Kerry, what does a penny raise? $3.4 million. Yet our police officers and fire officials and budget director and town managers and public works director and police chief and communications people are on the same pay scale as that. That's staggering. If you Quay raises more, I just looked it up, if you Quay raises $568,000 a penny. And so you're trying to keep up with the values that are still lower than other parts of the county. Thing Mr. Beezy told us at the budget work session, about the same house and the same subdivision selling for $410,000 in Garner and $700,000 in Apex is staggering. That's, it's the value. Garner, when I first got elected, Garner was the third biggest town in Wake County by far. We weren't even close. But our housing stock was older because Greenbrier and Forest Hills and Heather Hills and Edgebrook and Cloverdale and School Acres, et cetera, et cetera, were all built in the 60s and 70s. So we had old, the older housing stock, and the other towns had 4,000, 5,000 people. They had new houses. The value shot up. I stayed like this. And so that's why our tax rate is the highest, or second highest, on here, is because the penny raises less, because the values are less. And so we're trying to pay the same personnel, the same thing that Kerry pays and Raleigh pays and Wake Forest pays, et cetera, et cetera. And your penny raises less money, because the value. I don't know what revales would happen next time, I know it's a big shot last time, how much it increased in Garner. I don't know what will happen this time, or she told us, south, southern, and eastern Wake County. I don't know what's going to happen in '24, we'll see, but that's one of the biggest differences. But the revenue savings plan is set aside to pay, we've got, what, $7.8 million will be there, but if we sell bonds next year, we're going to sell 25, 20, 25, 30 million dollars with the bonds. You've got to pay for it, because those payments will start the next year, and that's what will pay for it. You know, we find out John Sausage Road's going to go from 4.5 million to 8, 8.5 million dollars. We've got to have that money there. I mean, that wouldn't even, the money set aside wouldn't even pay for that one project now. Of course, this can be extended over 20 years, but that's staggering to look at. But what a penny raises in Garner and our surrounding communities is why our rate is higher, because the values are deemed, by the way they do it, lower. And that's the problem, when you're trying to pay your staff like you should pay your staff, the same here is everywhere else. And so that savings program looks like, damn, they're sitting sick money aside. Well, yeah, it paid for the bond referendum, and it was presented in 2013 and in 2021, whatever it was, that's what it's for. And people see savings. It's savings to pay for that debt. And that's confusing to people, and I agree that if you raise taxes... And I agree that if you raise taxes five cents, say, we're going to build this, this and this with it, okay. Well, we're going to raise taxes because we're going to build a fire station and pay 15 new firefighters. That's one thing. And people don't, you'd have an issue with that because they can touch it and see it and see the impact. But it's a, it's a complex program, but it will pay for our capital needs, as I say, well over $100 million. And we get 69 we've committed to. So that's sitting around about. And I've, and I've talked with Mr. Kennedy about this since we had it, and, you know, as far as tweaking and everything, he's open to all that. But, you know, Mr. Hodges, and if you sit down and have to talk about it, there's not that much leeway because if you can sell these bonds, and with the interest rates going up, you kind of have to watch that money. So I mean, you can get rid of the revenue savings program, then in one year, you're going to have to raise taxes about 10 to 15 cents to make up for that and your operations. That's.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Singleton. Anything else?
I was, I was going to reiterate what Mr. Singleton said because I was, I was about to say that, yeah, we need the revenue savings plan for debt payment and the debt structure that we have, but in talking to Davenport, there might be some, some smaller tweaks because the revenue savings plan helps us bring in projects and amenities to the town, but you also need the operating for those. So we've got to figure out the balance of affording, of being able to pay for the operating as well as the, the capital projects. So, but we can't just gut it, as I would say.
Oh, no, no.
So, but there might be some tweaks.
You can, but you've got to raise taxes 15 cents. Yeah, you can get it.
Let me finish my question.
There might be some tweaks.
And I appreciate all that. I know it's a nightmare, and we've got all this coming in, and the evaluations are going to make some things happen. It's going to impact our, as we look at those fees. But where I was going with all that was, what you just said was that, have y'all had a chance to talk to Davenport? Is there anything we can do that won't impact what our long-term game plan is? I understand all that, and I really do. I know it is complex, but I understand it. But I know at our, at our meeting, we were talking about talking to them, is there any wiggle room that's going to help us with this big difference we've got to make up that it would have any impact on our revenue savings plan? I mean, I know we've got it. Do we have to put X amount into it continually, or can we adjust that a little bit not to impact anything that we've got long-term plan? That was my question from Davenport.
And that's something we'd want to take a deeper dive in with them, let them look at our current numbers, let them look at our updated models, and look at our projection on when the bond sales would happen, and then look at what type of tweaks could be made. Now, there, there are going to be small tweaks, not, nothing huge, but.
But it all adds up. It all adds up when we're, when we're trying to make up this deficit. Now, that was my question, had we had that conversation with them yet? And so if that's down the line, that's fine.
What Mr. Matthews did add on to that, I think, I think what the budget team's proposing is, one of the small things we could do now that does follow what policy's been done before, like Ms. Miller said, is any increases made this year, this dedicated to staffing and, and operations, just remove that from the calculation going forward, which is what we've done before when we've added any tax increase that was dedicated to cover personnel and those known operating-type expenses. So that is, I know Ms. Miller already said that, but just to follow on with your question, that's the one thing that everyone feels like we could do comfortably for this budget cycle until we have more time to analyze other steps.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And I would observe that, obviously, we have asked the public to offer up their comments on our budget, and several have come in online. I know I've seen those, and certainly one of the questions that I believe we had ask in this council room was something very similar, you know, how do you increase taxes when you've got a pot of savings out there? This is a pretty good explanation of that, but it's sometimes hard, I think, for a person on the street out there to relate to, to why that is so. So, Mr. Dellinger, why don't I give you an opportunity to?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that we're on the right path as far as needing to raise our taxes significantly because what we need to do is build that foundation and not, so that we can generate that revenue now, but as we grow, continue to generate it, get it out of the way, get to where we need to be. I think the other thing we need to look at as council, in this council and future councils to be, is what we're approving in taxing. If we're continuing to just build single-family homes and townhomes and this, that, and the other, we're going to continue to be on this treadmill. So part of it falls on us to look at the types of projects we're getting here, to see the type of real estate we're actually taxing in the future so that we can generate more revenue from the projects that we have in town. I went out to Fenton and Kerry off of 40 and Kerry Town Boulevard. If you've not been out there, you need to go out there and see what they're doing out there. The amount, we need to, we need to generate revenue, but we need to approve the right projects. And it's not a short-term fix, but we get this tax structure in place, it's proper, start approving the right projects, five, six, seven, eight years from now, we'll be in a much better place. Also balancing with commercial and sales tax revenue, we need to look at that, too. I had a kind of very specific question, looking through the budget detail report, and I don't, not quite sure, under permits and fees, no, yeah. The fee in lieu of parkland? It's a zero, and I'm trying to understand why that is. In 2021, the actual was 500, 700, it was 1.4 in 2022, and then the sort of projected was 170,000, but it's a zero in the budget, so.
We, we don't budget that revenue since it's dedicated for a specific use. So if, we don't want, we don't budget it so that it doesn't inadvertently get picked up for operations or something along those lines. So it comes in, it's recorded as a revenue, and then when it's needed, we do a budget amendment to, to show that the revenues on the budgets, the revenues budgeted and then the expenditure for whatever the purpose is. So like, we had a couple of land acquisitions where we used that revenue source, and we did that. We brought a budget amendment to council to allocate or appropriate those funds.
I mean, considering in 2022, it's $1.4 million, which is equivalent of two and a half cents, or more than that. It seems to skew our budget a little bit. It's, it seems to skew the gap a little bit.
I think it would, I think if you did budget the revenue, it would skew it in the opposite direction because you would have to budget an expenditure of the same amount, and it would just inflate the bottom line, the total, the total budget number. Because we, we don't have really many options as far as the ways we can spend that money. It's just, it's just so restricted and so limited. That's why we don't plug a number in there.
I mean, because that is based off of two things. One, our own policy, but there's also a state, and there's statute as well, that controls the use of that money. Okay, that partially explains it, but it, it might be helpful to pull, goes back to what I was saying before about projecting houses that get COs and come online, since that's the revenue generation of that. Projecting that out might give us a better idea as we're looking at our CIP, for example, of some other pot of money. Is that listed as another pot? Like, is that in the other? I had a question on the CIP, too. There was a category where, what's the, there's a difference between other and unknown funding source. What is the difference between that?
I think, historically, we didn't change any of the categories this year. Historically, we've used unknown if we just had no idea where it would come from. Other was a catch-all if there was a grant or a one-time funding source, or just something that does not have a, an ongoing, an ongoing supply, so we don't list it out individually on there.
Noticed that on the transportation improvement plan, there's other and unknown, and there's a lot of it in other, but I didn't know if there were specified funding sources or if it was actually just unknown and was.
Let me get to that page with you, Mr. Dellinger.
I think it's page eight.
Mr. Vance and Ms. Behringer, I'll get to you in just a minute.
Which page of your CIP?
Eight.
Eight of 17?
Okay.
Yeah.
So other, so partner agency funding in this case is things like LAP funding or other things like that. Other, other in this case is the tag tax, the car tag tax that we collect, but council dedicated it to a transportation use. So because that one's dedicated, we really could label it as such and just have an other for the catch-all. So I understand the confusion there.
Thank you, yeah. I just didn't know what the difference was.
It is, and, and just while we're on that, when that line and Powell bill, it's just going to, is going to roll up and be the, the amount to fund our street resurfacing, with the exception of one year that we noted that there's $2 million in the 23 bonds to do some specific commercial streets. Otherwise, those two numbers would roll up to your, your pavement preservation. If you look at nine, page nine, other and Powell bill funding will roll up to that first line of, of projects called pavement preservation, with the exception of year 23, that we're proposing to use some bond funds.
That actually ties into my other question when I was looking at the budget detail report, and under street maintenance as a category, there was a, from 2021 to '22, it was a 4% decrease, and '22 to '23, a 17% decrease. And so I guess my question is, is this bond funding sort of contributing to that activity in that, that department? Or, I just see a lot of decreases in street maintenance, and so I'm not sure where that offset is.
Which line again was it? I'm sorry that you were looking at.
This is in the budget detail report.
What was the name of the category you were looking at?
Street maintenance.
Street maintenance, okay. I know that one thing that often affects that is the amount of money we have every year. If our resurfacing contract rolls over into a fiscal year, it would show up. That may not be the only, I'm looking for validation with Mr. Beck, but that's, what I'm thinking of is probably at least partially contributing to the fact that you see a change, changes year to year if that contract doesn't get completed by, like this year's is well underway, but we won't complete it all before the, the year's over. So.
It is a big, under the street resurfacing, that's where the, the decrease is.
That's what it is. It's the carryover effect of the, we let the street resurfacing and then the pavement maintenance contracts in the, early in the calendar year, and we try to finish them before the winter, but it spans a fiscal year. So that fluctuation you see is, just depending on where we are in that. We typically are increasing that every year because we're, the two funding service sources we have are either the same or increase every year.
We also had a, I think, a few years there where we, we dipped into our fund balance for Powell bill funds, and then we exhausted that fund balance. So we, we had kind of increased the budget for a few years, I think, to catch up on some, some jobs. And then, once we exhausted that balance, it kind of came back down to, you know, what we could fund through the, the annual car tag fee and the, the annual Powell bill allocation we received each year.
I'll let someone else go. I've got a couple other questions.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Mr. Vance, question, sir?
Not at this time.
Okay, Ms. Behringer?
A couple of comments and one question. I would support Mr. Singleton's suggestion that we move approval to the second meeting in June, since we still have some questions and some, some to ask and answers to get. And I would also like to hear what Davenport has to say about our, our issue situation going forward, or how we can address that. And just for the next, for my question, I'm not sure this is the appropriate time, but Mr. Dellinger mentioned approving the right projects. Can you give me an example of what the right projects are?
Yeah, the right project would be one that is consistent with our future land use plan. So if it does ask for commercial, it include commercial. We start going towards higher density and mixed use, particularly around our high thoroughfare areas like 401, 70, 40, 540, and not be approving straight residential projects. If you go look around the triangle, there's a lot of diversity in the type of projects, increased density and vertical that generates more real estate revenue, more sales tax revenue from smaller parcels of land. So I, I think that's where we need to be more, have a little more discretion about approve, because once we approve something, nothing else is going to go there. And so we're locking in that tax model for that 60 acres, 100 acres, 200 acres, when we really need to be looking 20, 10, 15, 20 years down. I shared some information with Mr. Singleton and Mr. Vance that Midtown over Old North Hills, there's a, if you take just 60 acres of that, and even if you bumped it down 40% of the scale that that project is, it would generate four to five times as much as just a regular, single-family home, mixed use, not mixed use, but, uh, single-family and townhome project. So I, I think we need to all be more aware of what's going on in the triangle and, and just drive around some and see and say, we can do that in Garner.
Okay.
Rentals in Fenton, and Mr. Singleton had shared with me, are $1,600 for a studio. And someone else commented, we can't support that in Garner. And my comment is, well, by the time it's built, we can. And so this is the kind of longer-term thinking. I think we would, the town, the tax base would benefit from, and taxpayers would benefit from, and help us to long-term get off this sort of treadmill. That's the short answer.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That's all.
Mr. Vance, should I give you an opportunity? Or I'm giving you one now, if I have?
Yes, sir. I did not, I said, no questions at this time.
Okay, all right. Any follow-up quickly by anybody?
I think when Mr. Dellinger was talking about the right projects, he was also talking about zoning. Because it was already zoned, the project's allowed to go there because it's, it's a permissible use in that zoning category. So a lot of it boils down to rezoning and what do you rezonate to?
Let's see, Ms. Miller, was there, was there something else before we get to our scheduled break?
There was nothing else, just that, based on discussion this evening, the budget team's going to need guidance for when the council wants to see the budget organs come forward for adoption, and then based on some of the questions that we've posed based around the tax rate, and then also looking at excluding any additional increases if there's consensus among council members to, to increase it above the two cents that's planned from the revenue savings plan. So those are the sort of two to three items that we're looking for direction from tonight from the council.
Okay, thank you very much, and I would.
I do have a few more.
Okay, all right.
Specific questions.
Right along.
In the budget detail report as well, and let's see, the police chief is here, so that's good. I noticed there were several categories that we're either not increasing or we're decreasing in this department. So travel and training in '21 to '22 is 3%, and then it was down eight and down, down, it's down 5% from 2021's budget to this budget. And I don't know what professional services is also down, special events, equipment, non-capital. I don't know if that's moved to something else. And uniform, there seem to be a lot of categories that are decreasing or flat in an department that is adding people, and when those people come onboard, they also need a lot for equipment. And so I'm curious as to that.
I believe that some of, some of that may be attributable to some consolidation that the department was choosing to do with the numbers of divisions and where some of the items were budgeted. So you may, for some of those, you may see a decrease for that line in one division, but it may increase in another. For some of that, that is true. Some of those may, may also be where folks, because all the departments did a total of $2.1 million in cuts, and, and for some departments, the only thing that was available to cut was travel and training, so.
We're not cutting training in the police department.
Yeah, and we did, and we hired a number of officers over the last year, so we ramped up pretty good, and we're at or close to full staff, so I guess the numbers going forward won't be.
What is the cost of a new police officer?
The cost to bring them in?
Salary, training, equipment, vehicle.
The salaries in the $50,000s, and then the vehicles, another 30 or so? Do we have that number?
At $100,000.
It's about $100,000. It's about $100,000, including a vehicle, equipment, and training.
I mean, maybe I'll need to meet with the chief separately. Just because I want to make sure, I mean, when I see numbers declining.
Yeah, if we look in the.
In a department that's growing, you know, an increase that not matching the that's growing, you know, an increase that not matching the growth is one thing, but seeing a decrease is another. And so I just want to make sure that the department has everything that it needs. But we can revisit since we're not doing this on the sixth.
I think many, as of restructuring the budget document, is the broad answer.
And I'll say that, you know, my analysis really is a comparison year to year of the other categories, so I can probably get those questions answered pretty easily. The only other comment I had, and then I guess we can break, is I have some concern about right now where we are with the, and we're talking about this tonight, the use of the ARP funds in this budget cycle. I have a lot of questions about the policy that is, was proposed and the mechanism for how it's envisioned that that will operate. I have a lot of questions. And in reading the document, allocations don't need to be made until December of 2024. So I don't think we need to rush the policy and at least not to, for the purpose of making sure we use the funds in this budget cycle. I'd rather pull a little more out of fund balance and make sure we've got the right structure in place for the ARP usage, because again, we can talk about it tonight.
Which is something we'll be working on shortly after the budget is over. I think with the fund balance, one thing we got to look at too is, you know, not going below the 30 unless there's a special provision to do so. I think you can go down as low as 25, but then you have to try to get, get it back to 30 as soon as practicable. So that's one thing to look at when you compare the two revenue sources.
So my sort of two cents would be on the, with the ARP money to not look at that as a funding source, because I'm not really comfortable at this point with where we are in our policy and the process for using those funds. So I don't want to commit to using them and then sort of rushing a policy to make sure we allocate them and use them. So.
Okay. We have to see how other council members, I guess, feel about that and some other items. And to your point, Ms. Miller, if I'm on time here, I think we'll have to get to some of the specifics under discussion and Q and A if we take a break right now and-
Take a break in 20 minutes, lots of, we take a break right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm about to propose.
You don't, you don't have to, we just built it in if you needed it.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, even Ms. Behringer said we don't need to take a break, so that's okay.
Yeah, we don't need to take a break.
Well, that's a first.
I'm glad to know I'm the last word on that.
Okay, council, hey, I'll heed your wishes. Staff, I guess we should consider you as well if you need to get any other information or for the, for the other portion.
Right, we just, yeah, we need to, you to give us the information and the direction you want us to go in. I'm not saying you need to do it right now, if you're not comfortable doing it, but we need to know what direction you want to go in. So we need to be, I guess, prepared to talk about that maybe at a subsequent meeting.
Well, I think we could talk about it some tonight. I would anticipate that. I'm not saying any final decision has to be made, but, and again, not trying to delay it, but a couple have already suggested that maybe the June 6 meeting might be a little early for, if we were looking to approve the budget or adopt it at that time.
And we do have a heavy agenda tonight, so it's just a matter of how, how long you want to go tonight and still clear on things, I think.
Okay, while the manager's looking, okay, is it the wish of council to continue on without a break at this point?
Let's do it.
Okay, all right, all right. And we'll anticipate ending around 5:30 still, if that's possible. All right. Well, so it seems to me we are at the point of discussion and Q and A amongst our members. And again, to get to Ms. Miller's challenge to us is to give some direction here. I would, just sort of a side note, I assume other council members have been able to enter, what shall I say, the portal where public comments are made. I've looked at that. I was initially gonna ask if you could maybe print those out and bring them, but maybe satisfied that you've been able to access those and be aware of some of the comments of the public. And obviously, some of those comments are related to tax increases. So Ms. Miller, at this point, is, are there other bits of information that you expected to share or you've, you've reached the point where you want to hear further from council? Is that right?
That's exactly correct, mayor. And if there's additional information that council members would like ahead of their, the June 6 potential ongoing discussion about the budget, that would be helpful for us to know as well.
Okay, okay. Well, council, if you're ready, I'll be happy to hear from someone who raises their hand first. I suppose it's incumbent upon the mayor to, to speak to this issue. And quite frankly, it's a, it's a sort of a conflict that I have. I knew we were going to ask our citizens to, that there would be a tax increase of two cents and that was related to the bond issue. I don't think most people would be surprised at that. I think part of the challenge was how much beyond that will put us in a better place and whether or not we should do that incrementally and expect that if there's a smaller amount this year, there's probably gonna be a need for an increase again next year and maybe the next year. That's not something that most people want to hear and certainly I'd prefer to see that not happen. But I do suggest that, I think for many of our people, the idea that we've come through some very difficult times, don't want to blame COVID for everything, but certainly it had an impact on people in differing ways, not the least of which was jobs and income. And so I think sensitivity to that, I'm sure this council wants to, wants to do that. So my, my suggestion would be probably something in the range of three and a half cents for the coming year. But that's sort of a starting point of discussion. And even that, I'm sure for some will be considered difficult. But there are identified needs and are going away. I think on a positive side, and I guess we've mentioned this, I think our economy is becoming more diversified. We are attracting more types of businesses, which I think in the long run will certainly be a positive sort of thing. This town talked about when I first got on the council of having the balance between residential and business in terms of the tax burden. And, you know, we wanted to get beyond the rate that we were a number of years ago. So at this point, I will be pleased to recognize any council member who might want to offer up your thoughts on this. If not, I'll just sort of go the circuit and the loop and give each one of you an opportunity for, for comments.
I have specific questions about specific items that I hope that, we talked about this at last year's budget and some of these items that need to be addressed. There's three. One's expensive, another two are not that expensive from a dollar standpoint. It's creating safe, safety in neighborhoods and some of our crossovers. One is the Timber Drive, Greenway crossover, the flashing signs, making that crossover safer. As I mentioned at our public works meeting last week, I was in the town of Beaufort and Atlantic Beach a couple weeks ago for a couple days with my wife. And they've done exactly what we've talked about doing, putting signs in the middle, the flash to make them safer. And these are straight with no trees and nothing that, you know, if you come around the curve at Timber Drive, that is not an ideal situation there. That needs to get done. I don't know what it's gonna come out of, but we're not talking about massively expensive project, but that needs to be done to make that safer for pedestrians, period. Talking last year this time, we talked about traffic calming. We did some in several neighborhoods. I believe we got one coming forward to us or something in Hunter's Mark here in the near future.
Yes.
We talked about Pool Drive to South Garner, they've been asking for, for 20 years, from Buckingham to South Garner Park. And we talked about Main Street last year. And I think, you know, what we're doing now with the asphalt type of traffic calming would be what we'd be looking for at Pool Drive. I would hope on Main Street, we would look at something a little different with its elevated crosswalks. I believe at one time, the project at Ran Mill and that had an elevated crosswalk, I believe, right, Don?
Had a painted crosswalk to give the impression of being elevated, but drainage, drainage is gonna cause us to be challenged to be very, very expensive to do actual, raise one at that spot.
At that spot, but somewhere else. Again, I go back to Beaufort. And if they can have them on Turner Street and Front Street and this street and that street down there for people, we can have them in Garner. If that's the way to make Main Street safer and slow people down, fine. But we talked about it a year ago. Other item, and I think this is covered under park enhancement in our budget, our CIP plan with some of the issues we have with some of our tennis courts. I've heard from several people about that. I think that's in the CIP this year. Is that correct?
In the CIP, but we don't have a funding mechanism for it.
Well, yes, sir. The tennis courts we're in, we're hoped, we were hoping to do one of them this year. Council did give some funding for, for the perform list this year, but the project ahead of that had such cost overruns that we weren't able to do that. So we've gone back and have gotten revised quotes and are finalizing those. But we've proposed to put them in, in the CIP for, one for the upcoming year and one for the following year. But right now, that is only funded by either fund balance or we had programmed in ARP dollars. But one of those two one-time funding sources is, is gonna be needed to fund that and anything else in perform, because we don't have that projected into the five-year model in any other funding source. But it's on the staff's radar and they've got revised quotes for how to do that.
That's either, that's either doing, either the one at Creech Road or the one at South Garner, which we know that, we know that Creech Road, I think, has some water issues or issues with retaining water.
Bonding, yes. Yes, sir. And then on the, the other two items you mentioned, the traffic calming, both of those streets are likely, Main Street and Pool Drive are likely to be considered not necessarily the best fit for our traffic calming policy. And we've had some discussions in the past about the, the similarities between those. So, so staff would see those two as being an exception to that policy. And if council wants to direct us to do them, we can go and do them, but we just, we don't have a way to use the current policy quite the way we would in other places in town to just go out and do it that way. So we can do that at any point in time. Typically, what we've done is added those either to street resurfacing projects if we had enough funding, or if not, we've used bond funds, transportation bond funds. Similarly, with Timber Drive crossing, we've been waiting forever for DOT to get back to us with some of what they would do so that we could put together a quote for, for the other things we want to do. Mr. Johnson and I just had a conversation last week about the fact that since we have not gotten anything from them, he's gonna start putting together a list of several things, including those signals, but some other enhancements to crosswalks along that corridor so that we can take a reverse action instead of waiting for DOT. We're gonna tell them what we're looking for and see if any of their funding could go towards it. So that's in progress now. Traffic calming, we can address at council's direction and the tennis courts are in play to be done as long as we do, are allowed to use some one-time funding source from one of those two sources.
Okay. Well, the traffic calming, again, the policy, policy can be changed between 24 and 36 times a year. We had the same discussion last-
Amen, amen, amen.
Ma'am?
I said, amen, amen, amen.
Well, it's not necessarily a matter of changing the policy, it's just, I would recommend that council acknowledge that either or both of those streets are not the type street the policy was intended to cover and just make a council decision as to what you want to do to the street. So I would recommend that approach for both of those streets versus changing your policy.
Pool Drive has the largest parking lot for people that go to the park and it's been an issue for years. And we've, I've heard about it since I've been on the council. So it's been going on for over 20 years. And, you know, golly, to be sure we can get some speed bumps in there. What makes it worse is the hilliness of the, I mean, you go down, you can pick up speed and it makes it worse. Anyway, that's three specifics. Another item I'm gonna mention that some other counties have looked at, I know that folks have asked Wake County to consider this, and I'm just bringing it up. There are three programs Wake County currently has for property tax relief for people certain age, people who are veterans, people who are disabled. I know that Orange, Durham and Mecklenburg all adopted policies, new programs to provide property tax assistance to our property owners. Both Wake County and the city of Raleigh have been asked to adopt such a policy, don't know if they're going to. It's something different where the others are pretty restrictive. I mean, you gotta be a veteran, you gotta be disabled. This is something that's for long-term homeowners, property owners, help people particularly where gentrification's taking place. Something to consider. I've got it on my phone, took me a while to find it again. I really think that's something that we should consider with ARP dollars, but we'll get more discussion on that later when we talk about ARP dollars. To help those who have been here in a long time and may need some relief and do not fit in one of the other categories. I'll be quiet and let somebody else talk.
Thank you, Gray. Yeah, there was an article just recently in the news about the tax assistance program, referring to Wake County and also-
They've been asked by Habitat Youth Humanity and Wake Up One and a couple other people for the county and Raleigh both to consider changes, so.
So since you, I know we've, you know, we've referred to ARP funds from time to time. I don't want to get into a discussion if, if council doesn't want to, but does anybody care to elaborate? I mean, we've alluded to, well, okay, here's a one time we can use it here, we can use for tennis courts. Is now or do you anticipate, I know you're anxious to get the budget passed, but, you know, these are monies that are available to town, we're gonna be expending. So we've certainly alluded to them. Does anybody think now's a proper time to, to, to give at least an overview or oversight about how we might otherwise use those funds? I'm looking at the town manager, but you can-
Well, we could talk about it, but those funds are not gonna, right now, help the situation we're looking at in the budget. I mean, I think we need to get this budget approved and then we'll have a list and some guidelines on how we use those funds. Because there, I mean, certainly a number of one-time funds, we, I mean, one-time projects we could use that on. I know one of the things we want to try to do is leverage some of it. So we need to be, I think, strategic on how we use those and make them stretch further.
Another way to say it is, there's not anything particularly in the budget that's a one-time thing that we're using operation dollars for that-
We use 400,000, we are using 400,000 of it, of ARP in the current budget for some repair and maintenance, perform.
But if you didn't use that, it would likely just go unfunded. So it's not necessarily gonna benefit, as the manager said, the situation with the operating budget. We've, we've not been funding perform except for a couple of years. And if you choose to fund it, there's nothing in operations to fund it with. So you could choose to fund it with that or not, but it, it's, it's not gonna improve the operating situation.
You mean, there's no money available in fund balance to do that?
Yes, there is fund balance until you get to your 30% cap. There's not excess revenues in the operating line that can just be diverted to it, is what I meant, was meaning to say.
But I just want to be clear that, to say that the 400, if we don't take it out of ARP, it's not there, it doesn't get funded, we could fund some other, again, I'll say it again, I have concerns about us using that money without having our policies and procedures in place and also not, as a group, talked about how we see the vision for that. And I have a lot of questions tonight about the tracking of it and the reporting to us, to the government and all that stuff and, because there's like 60 pages to read or edit and have a lot of concerns. So I'd, I'd be, I'd be more comfortable if we didn't look at that pot of money for this budget cycle, kind of look at it for, even though maybe projects we go into fund balance to do, there might be similar projects next budget cycle, we know we have that pot of money to do those sort of capital improvements with. It's like to have things in writing before we start spending money.
Well, we do, we do have some time, flexibility available in that. And of course, at our next session, council is gonna be asked to, I guess, consider the voluminous amount of, I call them policies, I'm not sure if that's the right term, but the, the document that's been put together to explain all those things and the accountability forms and so forth and to sign that resolution so that we can move forward, right? Okay.
And I agree with what Dellinger says, we don't, that's not what we use here to balance the budget. That's not what that's there for. It's something we need to, we're gonna talk about it later in more detail, not tonight, we're gonna talk about policies. But I agree with what he said, this is not something we just, we're not gonna balance the budget with that, nor should we. should we.
All right, go ahead. Yeah.
Just, I know pretty much most of the downtown Garner folks will be supportive of traffic calming on Main Street, which does lead me to another question for the attorney. Around certain, being the chair of that board, we need to pull out certain budget items for recusal. Councilman Behringer is on that board as well.
I believe my determination was because the DGA was a creation of the town, similar to the GEDC, that that transparency statute does not require an automatic recusal. It's probably good practice for transparency to indicate that, you know, that you're a member of that board as well. There may be issues, specific issues that we can discuss that you might have with current allocations.
Okay.
But it's not an automatic recusal as it would be if there's another nonprofit being funded or another, you know, earmarked contract to, that a member of council would have a conflict of interest with.
Understood. And I guess the only other one that caught, something that caught my eye, and then I'll be done right now. Under program partners, it looks, it looks like all the program partners have been brought back up to their sort of pre-COVID numbers, except for the Garner Town players. Is there any particular reason their budget was decreased by $1,000 and some of the others were increased by 100%?
Somewhere the funding goes for the use of the GPAC, and if they're using it less, that might be why, but I'd have to look at that.
I just care, I mean, it's this, in 2021, it was 23,650, and 2022 was 23,650, and this year is 22,7 or something. It was just, it was an odd decrease. And the other funding partners of Garner Baseball, Civitans, Garner, Ms. Garner, Pageant, Capuley Soccer, and Gaseo all sort of.
I think we've left them close to flat over the last few years.
I'm pretty sure we did not make a reduction to anyone's request. I think that's either what was turned in as a request. There's also, there was a change in the last few years about the way we gave them dollars and then required them to actually pay a rental fee. And it could be just the structure we worked out to offset the use of the GPAC makes up that difference. And I'll see, if we can't get to it during this session, we'll look during the dinner break to confirm.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm not trying to be overly sensitive to the clock on the wall, but, so I'm going to ask council at this point in time if, back to, circle back to the original question in terms of your thinking as relates to how we generate the needed revenue in the coming year, and you have a chart before you there. I've given some preliminary thought to that and shared that with you. I think it would be helpful to our staff if there's a sense of the council regarding where you are in regards to increasing our revenue.
Mr. Mayor? Just a quick comment. As budgets, we've, a lot of us have been on this board for years, and I've had the honor of being the county commissioner, and I've never seen a budget so hard to resolve as this one. And I commend the staff trying to put it all together. I know we all got our input, we see it, and we get the input from the citizens out there. And whatever we decide, we have to pay it also. But with the continued growth coming in, I know we're looking at in our services, we've got to provide, and it's been mentioned many times, it's going to be years down the road before we see that revenue come back to us, plus a property eval. There's so many things factoring in this particular budget. I don't know if there's an ideal answer, I guess is the best way to put it for those at home that are listening, but we've got to come up with this figure. I guess my thing I would ask of staff, when we're looking at three and a half, four and four fifty, like I said, we all got to live with it, and we're trying to run our town the best way we can and be sensitive to these things. What is the, I'm going to toss this one out to you guys out there. What is the percent, is it three and a half or four? What is, are you recommending to this board that's going to help us move forward to do the best we can with what we got to work with? I guess that's the best way to put it.
While the manager's getting his thoughts, I'm sorry, go ahead, Rodney.
I mean, certainly, no matter what we pick, we're going to be in a deficit, but we want to, I guess we want to be realistic about, you know, what a one, what a yearly annual increase.
And when you, I'll pick on your word just a minute. When you say we're going to be in a deficit, I understand what you mean, but citizens out there, this council will not be passing a budget that has any deficit in it.
Oh, yes.
I mean, that maybe is a parsing words, but yeah.
Right, right, right. When I'm, when I'm talking about deficit, I'm talking about structural deficit and looking at the modeling going forward.
Sure.
Yes, and then knowing that we cut, you know, several million dollars worth of things out of the budget. So, yeah, so that's what I'm referring to. When the budget we pass is going to be balanced on the expenditure side and the revenue side, no matter, no matter what.
The mayor mentioned three and a half. Is that a realistic figure or where are we at?
Well, I think three and a half is realistic. It is just a start, but, you know, I don't, yeah, I don't know. I haven't thrown a number.
While the town manager thinks that over a little bit of field, why don't we let some of the people sitting at this desk? I mean, after all, again, I respect your asking them, and of course, they put a budget out initially and then they've taken it back and revamped it, but I think it's time for council members to go ahead and weigh in on this. Let's see if you have specific questions of staff you want to ask about this.
I'll yoke back to my council members, see what their thoughts were, what percentage this should be. We've got to live with it.
Yeah.
I'll sit you there, Mr. Vance.
Yeah, I will ask if our virtual members are prepared to weigh in on this. Ms. Behringer?
Sure. I would prefer three and a half. I will live with four if we have to do it, but I would prefer three and a half.
Yes. And I am good with a force that increase.
Four gives us half, about half of the.
Okay. I heard three, three and a half pennies in four. Is that right? Okay. Okay. Council members?
We just have to make the tough decisions as Mr. Matthews would say, that's why we get paid the big bucks, which I don't really know. I think four is putting us on the path. I'm very sensitive to Mr. Singleton's comments on trying to find a way to assist those who would be most heavily burdened by this tax increase, but also the one that's coming next year that is at least programmed into the model, which is, I think, something we don't want to overlook. It was still a decision we'll have to make next year, but based on the model that's presented, it's burdensome for a lot of people. And I think we should be cognizant of that, and as we look forward to ARP and some other opportunities, to see what we can do to assist folks and offset some of that burden. I think four is probably a good start for where we need to go over the next several years.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Singleton and Mr. Matthews, I'll ask either one of you, both of you.
Well, questions? I'm going to look up, to clarify, we're, a couple of things that's going to happen from the bonds that we've committed to. Two of the first expenditures are going to be Jones Sausage Road improvements and Fire Station Five and hiring the 15 new firefighters. Station Five from the bond, the firefighter positions are not from the bond. How much again was the 15, the 15 new positions this year, how much escapes me? I know they got the number, I cannot remember. It's 1. something million dollars, correct?
Equivalent to the 1.5 at least?
One and a half. Is that what it is?
I might find it in our sheets here. It should be in there. You have a fire section in the back for their funding requests?
I got two before I got.
I'll amend my answer because I was looking at the chart incorrectly. If four and a half is, I was looking at it as a, we need to get closer to the four and a half, not the four. I was looking at the total, I was thinking of a total versus the addition on top of. I think we need to get closer to the four and a half than the four. Because again, I think we are in a similar situation as a couple of years ago where we were playing catch-up, and I think we're still playing catch-up. Because it's a, the green is the two plus the two or three and a half, so.
The firefighters, 15 firefighters are $993,000 and $231.
That's for the, that's for the 10 months. The 10 months.
Yes.
So on an annual basis, you're talking about 1.1 million dollars roughly, right? Yeah. Chief pulls, but there's nodding his head, okay. So that's two cent right there that you're committing to. Plus, we've learned because increased costs, Ms. Miller sent us some information a couple weeks ago, that our portion of the Fire Station Five, which in the bonds was six and a half million dollars, our portion is now up to 7.2 million dollars because the station's up. And by the time the bids go out, hopefully in July, if the county follows through, our part will probably be seven and a half million dollars. Be a million dollars more than we're approving the bonds that we have to, we'll have to come up with because that's a priority with Wake County. Of course, they're a partner in that also. So that's something to consider when you're looking at these costs. You know, what's mentioned is highlighted here that some of these expenditures are for public safety, some for the help of our police, those for police reorganization. We also have laptop replacement. I know somebody will look at that and think, well, gosh, you can cut that. No. No, you don't cut that. Police use the laptops every single day. That's how they do work. You know, it's amazing, I've been on here a long time. Going over was one of the first, if not the first, town in Wake County that had dash cams in every single police car. That's been years ago, as the chief of law says, it's been a long time ago when we had that. We've always tried to look after our public safety folks, so, you know, laptops are their right hand nowadays. When you look at, that's just simple things in the budget, anyway. Whether we're talking three and a half, four, four and a half, I, you know, I mentioned four at the last budget meeting. I'm still thinking about it. That's why I'm not, want us to push approving the budget next Monday because I just think we still need to sit here and think about it. Or think about it during the week, not sit here, but you know what I mean.
Just clarification, I think we gave you the full cost, so just the town share of the cost share model would be right around seven, close to 700,000, just our share.
For the 10 months.
Yeah, 680 to 700.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay.
Well, for the full year, you're.
Yeah.
Mr. Matthews?
Well, I'm trying to listen to everybody, and my colleague, Mr. Dillinger, said that's why we get paid the big bucks, not very big, but to make these kind of decisions. And if I'm hearing everything right, Ms. Behringer was three and a half to four, Mr. Vance, four, Mr. Dillinger, four to four and a half, and to finalize, but I can, I can go with the four at this point to help put this thing to rest here.
I think Mr. Singleton said that he had, certainly, up until now, even prior to now, four was certainly palatable, or not less than that, right?
The expenditures we've got coming on, the increased costs, they continue to go up with just everything that is the triangle area. It's just, that's why I look at, want us to consider a program to help those longtime residents who may be in serious need of assistance for their property taxes, for reduction.
And that's certainly something we can consider. I'm not sure where those funds come from.
No, it's not going to happen right now, no, I realize that. Well, Durham started some of theirs. They seed money, some of that from the American Rescue Plan. That's why Durham County, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Yes, that's correct.
Orange County, excuse me again, I think I got the wrong county. It's on my phone.
Staff, are you reasonably instructed as relates to where the council is in terms of the, I guess, the original question? There's still not an absolute percentage amount or a rate increase amount, but.
I think we're either four or four and a half, but I think we're closer to four from what I'm hearing.
I'll revise, like I say, I'll revise mine to closer to five. Well, I mean, again, I misinterpreted the way it was presented. We need to go even a little bit higher. Again, we've sort of had this two penny, two penny operational catch-up. There's two there for bonds, the other two is going to keep us treading water, and we need to not tread water, we need to get ahead of this. If we don't do it now, we're going to do it later. That's just the fact. We're going to either just bite the bullet and raise on, go to five or five and a half, and it's going to hurt, it's going to be terrible, but it's inevitable. And the sooner we can get dug out of this hole and get ahead of this growth so that our departments that need to be built up before that growth or help that growth happen, inspecting things, checking on things, policing and all that other stuff, we don't want to wait till the growth is here and then try to catch up to the actual growth on the ground. We're in the hole on it. From a budgetary standpoint, we don't want to be in the hole when it comes to actual service delivery. And that's what we're trying to fight right now, is fighting that service delivery hole. We can't, you'll, we'll never get out of it if we get into it. We'll be in scramble mode and, and quality of life and service delivery and staff will suffer. You'll be stretched even thinner than you are now. So again, I revised mine to closer to five and a half to five with the expectation of not having to increase as much the two years after.
Okay. I don't know if any other council members want to weigh in. I tried to explain my position earlier. I will, I will stand there. I think if, if people were coming out of an economy that has not had the challenges and difficulties they had, and I know, as you all do, there are some people who are affected more than others, but being sensitive to that, I think even with potential increases in another year, hopefully circumstances, it might be better for a number of people who are still struggling. So, yeah, three, three and a half, up to potentially five, I guess, has been the range at least, and I guess if you were averaging that, it would probably be somewhere in the four to four and a half percent. So if, if that's, if that's a close enough range for you to, to work with for now. And again, I think we can probably resolve the issue regarding whether or not we'd bring it back for a discussion, but probably not a vote at our first meeting in June. Is that what you're hearing?
Certainly.
Yes. Right, right. And we do have, I was looking at the, the meeting, June the 6th, so there are a number of items on there. So we will, we can add that, but it will make for a long meeting. The other, the other option is to have, talk about it at the end of the work session tonight and/or have another special session, so.
All right.
I wouldn't, next Monday is lengthy, either have a special session, send your questions and you answer our questions back, and then we discuss it at the second meeting. But if we have to have a special meeting before then, we'll know before now and then. But I would not stick it on next week and then talk about it 10:45 at night after we've been here six, five hours or four hours.
Good idea, yeah.
Exactly.
Well, we'll need to know the exact scenario we're preparing for, the budget amendment ahead of time before we, so we can't discuss it and have the budget amendment ready on the second meeting in June.
That's why I say with some questions and we, and the 4% neighborhood now, pass that along, and y'all can, you gave us the scenarios, it's sitting right here. So if you know what you're looking at there, you can answer some of those questions, so.
It would also be helpful to understand council's perspective on any increase outside of the two, two cent that was planned, whether there's an interest and willingness to exclude it from the revenue savings plan, as been the practice when dealing with operating costs and staffing costs in the past. That would allow us then to be able to bring back some of those revenue dollars and reinstate some of the dollars we had to cut in next year's budget in order to balance it. some of the dollars we had to cut in next year's budget in order to balance it.
Increase will be to exclude it, but I was...
Yes, that's what we've done in the past, most recent past, I had no trouble with that.
Anybody else? Council, any other questions, comments for at least this special session before we go ahead and break and come back later on for our regular work session? Anybody? Mr. Vance, Ms. Behringer?
Yeah.
Go for the questions.
Okay. Mr. Dillinger?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, do you have one question? Will we extend the time to start the 6 o'clock work session since it's 5:45 now?
How about if we extend it for 15 minutes to 6:15? How's that? This gives you 30 minutes.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Anybody else on council? Questions, comments? All right, I'm gonna...
Just to clarify, do you think you're going to discuss this matter at the end of the work session? Because then you would have to continue to then...if you adjourn it, you'd have to schedule another meeting at least 48 hours.
Then continue it, and then if we want to talk about it, we'll talk about it. If not, then we'll close it, right?
Okay.
Continue it indefinitely? Do you have to have...
No, you have to continue it to a date and time certain, which can be part of the regular work session tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is if you adjourn, you technically can't discuss it later.
Right.
So don't adjourn.
Yeah.
Don't adjourn, we're just taking a recess, right?
Okay. All right. We clear on that?
Yes, then at the end of the work session, if you need to continue it to another meeting certain after, yeah.
We're eligible to do that.
Yeah.
Okay. So we just go ahead and adjourn without any formal motion?
Right. Or you... If you want to discuss it further on the sixth meeting, you know, you could announce that now, but we have enough time to call it as a special meeting if necessary. It could be added to the sixth agenda.
Okay.
If it's going to go on another day, we have to have enough time to schedule, you know, to do the public notice.
Okay.
At length, the next Monday's agenda, I just hope we won't add some next Monday's agenda.
Maybe we'll see how far we go by continuing it now and for further discussions.
Yeah, I would recommend that you continue it to the conclusion of the work session this evening, and then if you need to adjourn it at that time, you can.
Yeah, that allows to do that, okay. So, all right, and a motion for adjournment, excuse me.
Recession.
Recession right now is what we'll order, okay? So, declare this special session to be in recess, and we will come back at 6:15.
Good evening to you all and welcome to this work session of the Garner Town Council. This is a regular scheduled work session that we have usually the last Tuesday of each month. Thank you for coming in this evening and we will begin the meeting as we customarily do with a roll call. Let me just mention by the way as we do that, this meeting has a virtual aspect to it. There are two of our council members, Mr. Vance and Ms. Behringer who are meeting with us virtually. So the process this evening will be that as they speak or when they speak, they will make sure they can be seen on the screen. If we should take a vote, and I'm not sure we will in our work session, then our votes would be by roll call. So that will be some of the difference in our meeting tonight. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor Marshburn.
I'm present.
Mayor Pro Tem Vance.
Present.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Okay, thank you so much and all of our members are present. The next item is the adoption of the agenda. And before I ask you to do that, I want to note a couple of changes or ones in addition actually. So, Item 4 on the agenda, I've been requested to move that up to before what is now Item 1. That would be one change. And then under discussion and reports, there's an issue relating to one of our neighborhoods, Eagle Woods, that I want us to have some discussion about, so that would come under discussion and reports. So with those two changes, unless any other council member have any other amendments or changes?
Eagle Ridge Mayor, I know what you meant, but...
What did I say?
Eagle Woods.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know what you meant.
Okay, yeah. My faux pas there, I guess, yeah, thank you. So with those changes noted, council if you're ready, I'd be happy to entertain a motion that we approve the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. And all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Sorry, technically you have to do a roll call.
Oh, excuse me, violating my first rule. So Madam Clerk, if you will just call the roll and council members just vote aye if you're approving this.
Mayor Pro Tem Vance.
Aye.
Councilmember Behringer.
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Okay, and it is so approved, so thank you council members, sure enough.
Okay, as I noted, under discussion and reports, I wanted to have the council hear from Mr. David Smothers, who is, I believe, the president of the HOA, in Eagle Woods. And he will, excuse me, Eagle Ridge, I know it, I've been there several times. I got Woods on my mind, I'm sorry. There's a concern that several of the citizens have raised with the mayor this past week regarding a storm that struck the area that caused what they consider to be substantial damage. And the result at cleanup of the debris has been an issue that has not yet been resolved. And so the town has a policy as relates to storm debris and how it's to be prepared and how it's to be handled by the town. I believe as you'll hear from Mr. Smothers, there is some disagreement in terms of that policy and the fact that under circumstances that they believe their neighborhood suffered tree damage and otherwise, that the storm that hit that area was unique and should be the basis for the council perhaps as it can do waiving some of the requirements and taking a different stance. So with that, Mr. Smothers, I will recognize you at this time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you council members and also Mr. Dickerson just for listening to us. Eagle Ridge had about two weeks ago a terrible storm that went through on that Friday night about 12:30 in the morning with winds in excess of 80 miles an hour. One of our neighbors is a meteorologist and he's already sent letters to the mayor acknowledging that this was really one of the top five storms that's hit Garner in the last 20 years. And we've had numerous trees down, the golf course was, looked like a war zone, but so did our homes. Roots damaged, siding damaged, significant one-inch hail that just killed a lot of roofs over there. So needless to say, everybody's got a pickup truck is running through trying to do roof estimates now. But we've had an inordinate amount of debris from the storms that we are just asking for help from the city. I realize this was not a named storm, but neither are tornadoes. And this did have 80 mile an hour winds right at the surface and that's...
Good evening to you all and welcome to this work session of the Garner Town Council. This is a regular scheduled work session that we have usually the last Tuesday of each month. Thank you for coming in this evening. And we will begin the meeting as we customarily do with a roll call. Let me just mention, by the way, as we do that, this meeting has a virtual aspect to it. There are two of our council members, Mr. Vance and Ms. Behringer, who are meeting with us virtually. So the process this evening will be that as they speak or when they speak, they will make sure they can be seen on the screen. If we should take a vote, and I'm not sure we will in our work session, then our votes would be by roll call. So that will be some of the difference in our meeting tonight. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor Marshburn?
I'm present.
Mayor Pro Tem Vance?
Present.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Okay, thank you so much. And all of our members are present. The next item is the adoption of the agenda. And before I ask you to do that, I want to note a couple of changes or ones in addition, actually. So item four on the agenda, I've been requested to move that up to before what is now item one. That would be one change. And then under discussion and reports, there's an issue relating to one of our neighborhoods, Eagle Woods, that I want us to have some discussion about, so that would come under discussion and reports. So with those two changes, unless any other council member have any other amendments or changes?
Eagle Ridge, Mayor. I know what you meant, but I think you-
What did I say?
Eagle Woods.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know what you meant.
Okay, yeah. My faux pas there, I guess. Yeah, thank you. So with those changes noted, council, if you're ready, I'd be happy to entertain a motion and we approve the agenda.
So moved.
Okay.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. And all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Sorry, technically you have to do a roll call.
Oh, excuse me, you're violating my first rule. So Madam Clerk, if you will, just call the roll. And council members, just vote aye if you're approving this.
Mayor Pro Tem Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Okay, and it is so approved. So thank you, council members, for your enough. Okay, as I noted, under discussion and reports, I wanted to have the council hear from Mr. David Smothers, who is, I believe, the president of the HOA, in- and, excuse me, in Eagle Woods, and he will- excuse me, Eagle Ridge, I know it. I've been there several times. I got woods on my mind, I'm sorry. There's a concern that several of the citizens have raised with the mayor this past week regarding a storm that struck the area that caused what they consider to be substantial damage. And the result at cleanup of the debris has been an issue that has not yet been resolved. And so the town has a policy as relates to storm debris and how it's to be prepared and how it's to be handled by the town. I believe, as you'll hear from Mr. Smothers, there is some disagreement in terms of that policy and the fact that, under circumstances, that they believe their neighborhood suffered tree damage and otherwise, that the storm that hit that area was unique and should be the basis for the council, perhaps as it can do, waiving some of the requirements and taking a different stance. So with that, Mr. Smothers, I will recognize you at this time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members, and also Mr. Dickerson, just for listening to us. Eagle Ridge had, about two weeks ago, a terrible storm that went through on that Friday night about 12:30 in the morning with winds in excess of 80 miles an hour. One of our neighbors is a meteorologist, and he's already sent letters to the mayor acknowledging that this was really one of the top five storms that's hit Garner in the last 20 years. And we've had numerous trees down. The golf course was, looked like a war zone, but so did our homes. Roots damaged, siding damaged, significant one-inch hail that just killed a lot of roofs over there. So needless to say, everybody's got a pickup truck is running through trying to do roof estimates now. But we've had an inordinate amount of debris from the storms that we are just asking for help from the city. I realize this was not a named storm, but neither are tornadoes. And this did have 80 mile an hour winds right at the surface, and that's why we had so much damage. We had 100, 110-year-old oak trees lifted up and thrown with a root ball, geez, 30 feet around. So, I mean, we had some significant damage. So as HOA president, I'm here tonight to ask for you to help us. We don't want help for long, just maybe a one-time sweep through, so that the debris that is there at the curbs can be picked up and helped us with the unprepared yard waste. So thank you for listening.
Okay, let me say a couple things before you leave the podium. Number one, I'll be sensitive, we have right much business due tonight, whether or not the council wants to take this up at this time, or maybe perhaps near the end of the meeting. That's one item. And while you're here, if a council member wants to ask a question of you, then I will give them that opportunity at this time. Anybody? Okay. Ms. Behringer or Mr. Vance? Okay, hearing none?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Smothers. I will, you can sit down if you'd like to, or I will say to council that I've heard from any number of residents over there, I've viewed the area myself, I'm sure it's changed a little bit over time, but so I wanted to put this before council, you've heard the request. And so if you'd prefer to discuss this after we've taken care of the other main areas of our agenda, we can do that. But if you're prepared to take a position on this matter now, now would be a good time to do it. Anybody want to state a preference, one way or the other?
Why don't we just pick up the trash?
Yeah.
I'm not clear on what the issue is.
Okay, well, I will ask the town manager and/or, of course, we have Forrest here also who can comment on this, but do you care to respond there?
Sure, sure. So several staff members went out and assessed the situation, and we do sympathize with the residents. You know, I can't argue whether it's one in 20 year or not, so I mean, I do believe that. But with the piles of limbs that we saw out at the curve, I mean, we believe that we have a mechanism to take care of that, and that would be through our normal yard waste pickup. I think 90% of the piles, with some effort in preparing those, would have been gone already. We contract with the contractor to pick up yard waste, and however, they only pick it up if it's prepared. And that's what we pay them to do, because, you know, they don't have the equipment out there. When they picking it up, they put it in a roll-off, a packer, like a regular garbage packer. And so if it's prepared, you know, they'll take it. If not, they leave it. And so we think that a majority, there's probably, I don't know, 10, 15 maybe, dozen piles out there that are, you know, fairly substantial, but for the most part, we feel like that a majority of them, if they are prepared, that the regular mechanism of yard waste pickup would take care of it, and they would have already been gone. We have relayed that to the neighborhood. They don't agree with it, so, you know, there's a need for us to probably get into back and forth, but that's just our assessment of it. We typically, we typically pick up storm debris when it's more of a town-wide event.
I guess that's part of understanding, if it hits one part of the town, you still want to pick it up.
I mean- Yeah, but every week, you could, well, anyway, we don't need to get into all of that. There's always somebody that has storm damage. It's just a matter of, you know, whether we want to be out there picking it up all the time, or have the residents do some prep and have it picked up.
I have no trouble going around picking up. There's about a couple dozen piles that probably need some equipment. I'll say this honestly, I mean, I live in an acre lot in Garner, full of trees, and on a weekly basis, sometimes we put more yard waste out than what I saw in front of some of these houses. I'll just tell you that. Some of that stuff, all you need is a saw to cut the branch in half, either string it together or put it in a trash can, put it out there, they'll pick it up. You know, some of them were small piles. They can be, I mean, we do it all the time at our house, because we got pine trees galore. But there are some piles out there that are substantial. I rode by yesterday, I saw the tree service at Seastone, near Seastone and Challenge, at that intersection, doing a lot of work. So I had no trouble with going through there and doing it. We had done it before. Mr. Smothers mentioned that we had a torn 80 years ago, 20 years ago, we started going through Greenbrier on a Friday night, tore it up pretty bad, and you remember that, Mr. Matthews? So I had no trouble going through there and cleaning it up. But it's, you know, there are, as Mr. Dickerson mentioned, there are some of the piles could easily be cleaned up and just based off the policy.
Anybody else care to weigh in?
Yeah, my opinion, my opinion would be to be merciful and go pick that stuff up. We might want to, going forward, make a statement more often about preparing the yard waste for us to pick it up. But this is certainly not something they were ready for, and it was out of the ordinary as far as normal yard waste pickup.
Yeah, and I agree as well with what's being said, based upon the storm type and how it was isolated and the velocity of the storm, I would say if we can do it, let's go ahead and pick up the waste.
Okay.
I'd agree with that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'm not sure if it's necessary for a motion. I think the consensus of council is to, I would say, make an exception this time under policy and to have Public Works arrange to pick up the debris that's there. With asking Mr. Smothers to ask the citizens there to be council, excuse me, to be conscious of the small piles that can be, we saw some, I think, that should adhere to the, you know, the length and the tying those up so they can easily be picked up. Do you think you need any further motion or anything on that?
No, no, no. I mean, we're certain, staff's certainly prepared to do what we're asked to do, and that's fine. We would just ask that, you know, we put a parameter on the time limit. We'll work with Public Works and the Public Works Director to put a time limit on when we're going to go out there, because, you know, we just want to make one pass and be done. And then recognizing that putting crews out there to pick up this garbage is going to take some of our crews from our regular everyday events. So just recognizing we might have to catch up on some of those things, like the, you know, I don't know which crew he's going to put out there, but the mowing and those things that we typically do every day. So it is going to take away from some of those, but we'll certainly go out there and pick out what we can, so.
Okay, and so as a sort of a final resolution, will it be reasonable to ask Mr. Jones if he will confer with Mr. Smothers to give him a date solid and, yeah, would be sort of a one-time thing? So the residents need to be very sensitive in having, you know, the damage that they had out there from the storm at the curbing as would be required. Is that satisfactory?
Yes, and I think my previous discussions with Mr. Smothers is pretty much what's out there is it.
That's it.
So I guess we can work out a time whenever you're available, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jones. I know your department's very busy, and so I know you'll do what you can. So, yeah, we'll set a date and get it done. Hopefully, no more storms will hit you or anybody else here. Thank you very much.
I can make one, just a quick observation.
Yeah.
It is a rare event, a storm, but I think it's interesting, everybody does me as the tree preservation guy. It's probably no coincidence that they've cleared all that land right next to Eagle Ridge, and that storm came through with those winds. So let's keep in mind when we're talking about tree preservation, that it slows these storms, it cools the air, and decreases the intensity of these storms. And we'll see more of this, but I just don't think it's much of a coincidence that it occurred.
Okay.
Let me mention to someone who was out there before the golf course was built, because the town went to buying some of that property for a park. A lot of that was open land with trees. They didn't have to cut down as many trees to that, because a lot of it was a meadow years ago. They cut down some trees, yes, but it was not, it was not a completely wooded area.
It's satellite.
Thank you, Mr. Smothers, for your time, and thank you, Mr. Jones, for indulging this, and so I think it'll result in a good conclusion. Okay? Thank you. Okay. All right, moving back to our agenda, council, we said we were going to move up item number four, so signalization of Bryan and White Oak Road intersection update. This is something that had been discussed previously and is coming back tonight. So is Mr., yeah, there's Mr. Treasburg. Welcome, sir. Recognize you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, both present physically and virtually. We have Mr. Randy King here tonight from Pulte to give you an update on their progress since we last met on this last month. In your staff, or in your packages for tonight, I just included the information from last month. They're not completely done with everything that they had hoped, that they hope to accomplish for you. Hopefully, that'll be next month, but he is here to give you an update thus far.
Okay, thank you very much.
Jeff, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Yeah, good evening, sir.
Randy King of Pulte Homes. It is good to be back this month. As we discussed last month, we are working on the improvements to White Oak Road at the Bryan Road intersection and just north and south of there. That is a project that we're working with your staff and NCDOT to devise a road section that could be completed through that area to relieve some of the traffic overcrowding that currently exists and that is projected to exist in the future. And I think as importantly, to accommodate the lanes that NCDOT would require in order for that intersection to ultimately receive a signal. So I owe you a progress update. Since our last meeting, we've had additional surveys. We've worked with our engineers to update the alignment, to make it as friendly, I think, to the right-of-way constraints that we anticipate. So we've narrowed it up a little bit. We've presented that to DOT. They are accepting of that alignment, working with your staff. There are a couple comments there that we're going to kind of work through as to how that configuration works. But we feel like one of the most important things is determining where the right-of-way is that we can get and where there are challenges to right-of-way. So with that, our engineers put together a, they compiled a list of, I think, 15 or 16 properties that would be impacted by this project, as well as a, an assessment of the amount of property, so that we could begin working with those property owners, and I'll give you an update on that in just a second. Based on that and the revised alignment, we have put together a preliminary budget and schedule that I will run over in just a minute. As we've looked at the budget and schedule, we see that it is a sizable project, and it does take quite a bit of time and effort to put this on the ground. So that is sort of a forewarning of where we're heading with that. As far as the property owners, the good news is Keith with, Keith Roberts with Timmons has relationships with some of the property owners that we anticipate would be impacted. He's made some initial conversations with those, and those have been positive. I think people in the area understand the traffic issues that are out there and are happy to see that somebody's working towards making a solution. So we're, we've only contacted a couple of these, but so far, the response has been positive, so that's very good. So we will continue that process to determine where right-of-way exists, and we'll use that information, or where right-of-way can be achieved. We use that information in guiding sort of the final alignment to make sure that we can get a road section that can be built. We talked about the budget. So we've taken, taken the current layout, looked at the amount of widening that is required. We've looked at the amount of right-of-way that we think is required. We've looked at the amount of utility relocations that we anticipate would be required. And then we've compared that to a similar project they were doing in Durham that was just bid recently. Those bids show us that the current construction market, as we all know, is pretty expensive. And so to establish a budget for this interim section that we're building, or that we propose to build, our median budget would be about $2.6 million. I would say, based on the preliminary nature of the plans, that could vary by 20 or 25%, either higher or lower. But it is a substantial undertaking to do this widening, and again, that's based on bids that we've received this year for similar type work. As far as the schedule, without going too far into detail, we believe that the project, if we begin right-of-way right now, we've allocated about six months to work through the right-of-way process and to get right-of-way at least determined, if not acquired, in the fall. With that, we would proceed with a more detailed design and get our final design worked up. We think that that final design and permits, it's probably the end of next year before that would be complete. Once we have the right-of-way, once we have the design complete and approved and the permits in hand, we begin utility relocations. We've budgeted about six months for utility relocations and then additional year for the road widening itself. That would put the road widening being complete in the summer of 2025. That is just over three years from now, but that is, I think, the challenge that we're up against, is that it is quite a bit of work, and it has a very linear timeframe when we put things together. A lot of things that could affect that, either positively or negatively, would be right-of-way acquisition, the time and expense of utility relocations, the construction market itself, and then the approvals. With DOT, there are multiple levels of approvals that are needed for a project like this, and those things, we think we've put reasonable time budgets in for those, but certainly any of those could vary. We could expedite things if things go well. If they don't, you know, it will delay us further. But that is our current budget and schedule. In looking at how this works relative to the project that we have coming before you, our current project schedule would have us coming back, the second meeting, I think, in June, to have this advertised for public hearing. And talking with Jeff, I think that would put us at a planning board in July, and hopefully back for a rezoning approval in August. Because of just the length of some of the approvals, we would go ahead and submit our next set of approvals, which is the site plan and I think a special use permit. We would submit those and let those run concurrently with the rezoning, in hopes that we could get those complete by December of this year. I will say that that sets us up to then be able to get a road control permit for the onsite development, and that is critical to the schedule that we have for our project. But following on with that, CDs for the onsite work are critical as well, to achieve those by summer of 2023, so that we can begin the onsite development. With all that, and the lengthy approvals that we anticipate with DOT, we see quite a lag in there between the time that we would have our onsite development complete and the time that this roadway would be complete. That is something that I want to vet with your staff and with our folks as well, but when we come back in June, we'd like to speak to that a little bit more clearly. It would be difficult for us to build a whole neighborhood and have it finished and then have to stop and wait while we try to complete this roadway project. I don't have a solution for that today, but it is one of the things that certainly has concerned us as we've looked into this over the past month. That's all I have prepared for now, and so I'd like to open any questions that y'all might have.
Thank you. I think the map item you have there, that's for our consumption, is that right, or not?
Yes, sir. I can share this.
Council wants to view it or look at it, yeah?
It's very preliminary.
I'm sorry?
It is very preliminary, but I'm happy to share it.
That may be fine. I don't know if this is a document we need or not.
I don't think you need it at this time.
Okay.
Unless you're curious about looking at the preliminary.
Okay, all right, fine. Just wanted to clarify that. Let's see, where did Ms. Treasburg go? Was there anything else from you, sir? Okay. Well, council, any questions for Mr. King? He has followed through in bringing back this update. I appreciate that and the work that's going into this. Seems like it's moving along a line that still has an end date on out there ways, but I guess these projects are like that, right? So let me see, I'll sort of go around with council, see if anybody has a question, and I'll start with Mr. Matthews.
Not this time, other than, thank you for what you put together and the update here. At least we're in the loop on what's going on here, and when we see people can work together and developers work together for a common goal for everybody, that's a good thing. That's good business. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. King, thank you for what you brought forward to us. Question I have specifically, if, if the road can stay somewhat on a schedule, you said to be completed by summer of, of 25, which is three years.
Sure.
Uh, and the project that you're looking to bring forward to us, so when do you think, based off you getting your permits and stuff by the end of this year and site grading, I mean, a site work and so forth, so, so when do you think you will have homes that are completed and ready for, you know, COs to be sold?
That would be the summer of '24, so it's about a year ahead, um, and that, that's part of the, uh, that's why we would like to expedite the road work as much as we can.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Dellinger.
Yeah. My understanding, this is, uh, your project, how large is your project?
Um, we're about 370 homes.
My understanding is like, there are other projects that you're representing in this effort, correct?
Yes, so that is part of the process. We, we need to understand better the scope, but then we think that we'll approach some of the other developers, uh, in the area to, to bring them hopefully into the project. Um, there are, one of the developers that we've spoken to has property that would otherwise be required, I believe, to dedicate right-of-way and to do some widening just for his project. So, if he can get in the boat with us, he could probably get it done more cheaply and, uh, with less work and headache, I think. And so, so we think that we'll find some partners like that along the way.
I thought when you were here last time, y'all were already sort of working together as, and you were leading the two or three other developer.
Yep, so, so the developer with Core Properties who is here, um, yep, he's expressed interest, uh, as we get the scope worked out of being part of this solution. So we're, um, he's another one that we think will, uh, will partner with us on this.
Yes, for, so if, as I already say, and this may be an attorney question, what is our relationship and what is the contingency of their work on that project and their actual project? So if they come to us in June with a project that we don't like and say, no, you, we don't like your project, then what happens? Because it sounds like there's like a loose quid pro quo of some sort of, we're going to do the commitment on the, well, I mean, it's what it sounded like, we're going to do all this road work, and then we're going to bring this project in front of you, and we have to approve it or the road work won't get done. So I'm trying to be clear on what the relationship is to the commitment they're making to the road work and our objective, um, biased, uninfluenced decision on whatever project they bring to council.
Unfortunately, I can't answer that at this point. Um, to the extent that they bring a project forward and there are required road improvements to be done associated with that, then that would be a part of that project. The extent to get off-site improvements may depend on some kind of developer agreement or some other type of agreement between them to get to the timing of those.
Is that what you're anticipating, is bringing your project in a sort of a contingency and or another, uh, condition related to the road work improvements?
Yes, sir. So our, our first goal would be to bring a project that this council would approve. Having the project with the road improvements that the council, that the council wants to see as well is the secondary goal, so we hope to bring both of those back in June. Um, we would like to make the road improvements, or one way would be to make the road improvements a portion of the zoning, and so, so that seems to work well. In my experience, where a developer agreement might come into play is to work with the council or to work with the town so that if other developers in the area just want to sit and wait and wait till we build the road and then come in and develop such that all their improvements were already done, if we and the council had a mechanism to get them to come to the table and pay a fee in lieu for the work that is being done or is already done, that would be beneficial to the process. If it is a, a development that would already benefit or would have to do this work, to ensure that they would participate in their fair share of that is one way it could go. We're certainly open to discuss that with your legal staff and, and your town staff as well.
I'm just really con- concerned about how these two things come together so that it's not, you're here today saying you'll do this road work and you invest some money in some engineering and this 370 project, we're like, oh, yeah, they're going to do that road, and we approve it, and then it's like, oh, well, the cost went up and, but you approved our project, so we're going to build it out. And so I want to make sure that all those things are happening in the right timetable so that we don't get stuck with a road that still needs the improvement and we have to end up paying for all of it.
I think that we're all heading in the same direction. We would have some similar concerns, and that's our goal was to, to draft some conditions that go with the zoning that make sure that the town gets what they're looking for, make sure that as we do our project, we can also do this widening and get the two completed in a reasonable timeframe, so.
Yes, I asked Jeff, what's the timeframe for the other projects that they're in discussion with about, when do they plan to come to council, or where are they in the process, I guess is a better question.
Well, one of the projects is on hold, um, so they're waiting for, to see if this project would get a green light or not. Um, and other projects are aware and are tracking behind, um, so everybody's kind of keyed in on the upcoming decision for, for this project.
They're in the, they've submitted plans and gone through technical review, and they're just waiting to see where this goes, and...
Right, so that, so there's, there's at least, I think, two other projects that are in review. They're about a cycle or two behind, um, the Pulte project, um, so given that they've not, they're just getting ready to come to council, the others are a month or two out.
How large are, how many units are those projects?
Um, I think between, there might be somewhere between 250 to 400. It's not a, it's not a huge amount. This is definitely the largest of the projects.
Okay, yeah, let me get the, uh, Ms. Behringer, any comments, questions?
No questions, thanks.
And Mr. Vance?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. King, thank you for bringing back the information that we requested, uh, back in April. Uh, that was a quick turnaround. Uh, just a few questions for you, Mr. King. Uh, did you, did I hear you say correctly $2.6 million for the proposed improvements?
Yes, sir.
$2.6 million, okay. All right, and, uh, this is, uh, from my experience, a pretty aggressive schedule you have for the improvements. Um, I understand that there, that there may be some, uh, unforeseen, uh, un- unforeseen issues such as with utility relocation, things like that, that may vary with the, uh, uh, cause of schedule to, to change, also with the, uh, right-of-way, uh, may also, it, it never, you never can tell what's going to happen, but, uh, yeah, but all in all, this is an aggressive schedule, and, um, I, uh, I commend you all for putting this together as quickly as you did. Uh, the next thing is, uh, you said the summer of 2025, is that for the completion of the road improvements?
Yes, sir. That would be for the road improvements. Um, if DOT then finds that the intersection warrants a signal, they typically would put that up after the road widening is done.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, all right, all right. And that would be a part of the schedule, would it not?
Um, so the, when I say the road improvements would be done in summer of 2025, um, I would allot another three to six months for DOT to put up a signal.
Okay. Okay, all right. Okay, well, uh, again, thank you for bringing back this information in such a timely fashion and having a, a, a good, uh, strong schedule for us to look at and to, and plus with the cost, I hope that the cost stays, if we, if it's approved, within this range, uh, for you. Uh, it, it appears to be very reasonable, uh, and honestly, I was, I was anticipating more, but, uh, uh, again, I appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Well, and thank you. I would want to point out, we consider this the interim section. There is on your CTP, an ultimate section that does have the median constructed and in a final format. Um, this is an interim section that would achieve the lane work that DOT requires in order for this intersection at Bryan Road to have a signal. They require the...
Gotcha.
...two through lanes in the southbound direction and at least two lanes at the intersection to allow for a left turn.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, any quick follow-up by anybody here? Anybody? Great, like, okay. Well, okay.
I'll just say, I hope we can work with the DOT to not have to wait for three to six months to get the signal put in once the road work's completed.
Right, same here.
We'd like to think so.
Okay, Mr. King, we appreciate you coming in and...
Thank you very much.
...sharing that, and we'll be having further interaction down the road a ways, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you, sure. All right, next item, uh, Mr. Treesburg, I believe you're up again, is that right? Uh, street, street step completion policy is my next, excuse me, I'm sorry. We'll give you a break. American Rescue Plan policies, yeah, we switch those around. Our attorney, Ms. Jones, will lead that, and Mr. Davy Beck, I guess.
I'm here all night, so we can go in whatever order you'd like to go in.
Okay. Take us that long to go through all these rules and regulations, but you've done a good job, I think, of ferreting them all out.
You, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I pulled up the wrong one, sorry.
The one I called for initially.
All right, let's try this again. All right, so as there was a little bit of a prelude to this with Councilman Dellinger's comments, um, the town is receiving, um, just over $10 million in American Rescue Plan funds. As a requirement of receiving those funds, we have to adopt a certain, um, certain required policies. So you'll see in some of the policies is that it's the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. We are specifically, uh, being awarded the money through the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Program, which is not a very good acronym, so you'll mostly see it as ARP or ARPA. Again, our allocation is a little over $10 million. The award terms and conditions require the adoption of certain policies, and the policies that are being presented to you tonight and in the packet are based on templates that the, um, UNC School of Government, uh, developed in looking at all of the federal requirements for, um, the American Rescue Plan in specific, and then general, uh, federal grant and federal program requirements. So there are six policies that, uh, we have to have at a minimum. If you were to spend money in certain categories, uh, like premium pay, uh, or water, sewer stormwater, infrastructure, there would be additional policies that have to go with, um, acquiring property or, uh, financing certain things, so, um, as was discussed in the memo that was provided in the packet, we're looking to primarily use what's called the standard allowance, which is $10 million, in the revenue replacement category. That can then be used to sup, what they call supplant. So what we're doing is going to spend the $10 million in federal money for most likely salaries and benefits, and then we're going to reimburse ourselves for that, and that's what frees up the $10 million to be spent on one-time projects or, or whatever council has determined they want to spend, but that's a later decision. That's not necessarily has to be done before the policies are adopted, but we need the policies in order to be able to start accessing that money, that actual federal allotment of money. Go through each of these. So, um, the financial management and internal controls policy. There wasn't a template for that because, um, all municipalities in North Carolina have to have, um, certain fiscal or financial management fiscal control policies, um, as, as part of state law and in dealing with, um, tax funds and the spending of those funds. So we have based this policy on the town's existing purchasing policy, which already has a seg, uh, you know, a portion of that that's devoted to how do you spend federal funds as opposed to how do you fund, spend state or local monies? Um, so we, uh, the finance department, uh, particularly added updates for, um, the American Rescue Plan and some of the other federal programs. I believe it was at your last meeting that you reaffirmed the micro purchase threshold, which is again, um, to be used for, for federal funds. And then, um, this new policy is also in addition to the town's fiscal and budgetary policy guidelines. So this is probably the easiest of those. We, we already have a policy, we already comply with that, we're just making it, um, you would just be adopting this particularly for the use of these funds in the event of an audit or some kind of questioning by the, um, U.S. Department of Treasury about the use of the ARP funds. The eligible project policy, um, again, there are four categories under the federal statute that allow you to use, um, the $10 million, $10 million, $9,000. Um, you've probably heard of the COVID-19, public health and negative economic impacts, premium pay, then there's the infrastructure category. We however are primarily using the money for the revenue replacement, which allows, under revenue replacement, those monies to be used for any general government services. So to prevent a lot of record-keeping and things, the easiest way to use the money is by salaries and benefits. That means we're not contracting out, you know, we're not doing sub-awards, we're not doing a lot of other record-keeping that we would have to do because essentially we already have our employees submitting time sheets and sort of, you know, certifying their time, so, um, it's the easiest way from a record-keeping to meet the technical requirements of the American Rescue Plan. The eligible project policy does say that there are certain prohibited use of funds. For instance, this money couldn't be put in a rainy day fund, couldn't be used for certain things like that. And then I think, um, anticipating Councilman Dellinger's, there also has to be a project approval procedure, and you'll see that it talks about submitting your project to the finance director and then the town manager and, and that being reviewed. This is the minimum requirement that we need to meet for the federal money. Now, in some respects, if we're using the money to be supplanted and using it for salaries and benefits, that decision's already been made, that doesn't need to go through kind of a vetting process, but I understand that council, that when this frees up the $10 million, council's going to want to decide, you know, want to figure out how that can be best leveraged, and again, that was what the manager talked about with a list and certain things, and are there opportunities to match with other partners or to do those kinds of things? So this certainly could be amended in the future to do that, but it's not required specifically for how the town intends to use the money. So the federal government, when they audit this, aren't going to necessarily need to know every project that the money ends up getting spent on. They would, however, like to know that these are transformative and they are addressing needs in the community, uh, and that kind of thing. So, um, again, we, and I meant to preface this, we really need to adopt these policies before... before we can expend any of the federal money, which means we can't free that money up until we have these policies in place. Or else we'd have to go through a lengthy process of showing that we already abide by all of these things, which we may not necessarily have written down policies to cover all of these. But to the extent that any, you want to spend any money in this coming budget year, you'll want to adopt the policies as well as the grant project ordinance, which kind of gives it a special place for the money to sit and to have those funds then be transferred into the general fund. Allowable costs and cost principles policy, there are certain things that the town has to go through. So basically, you have to show that these are necessary and reasonable costs. Generally, the provision of government services, we already have that necessary to provide police services, to have public works out there doing storm cleanup and doing other services. So we still have to check these boxes. Allocable, there's, if you saw in Exhibit A, there are certain categories. To the extent that this wasn't just salaries, we'd have to say that 10% of someone's time was spent on this and 20, you know, and 25%, that's alloc- you know, how much of the money is being allocated for different types within that. We also have to show that it's not prohibited under state or local law. You've probably heard a lot about municipalities can't spend money on broadband under state law, but counties can. So that would be one of the areas where we would say that how we're using it does not fall under the prohibition. And again, generally, the town will utilize the standard allowance. Those kinds of, the category technically is general cost of government. You may see in some of the policies that normally a federal grant, you wouldn't use for your own employees' time necessarily, but this is an exception in the American Rescue Plan that salaries and benefits, the federal funds can be used to support that. For the conflict of interest policy, this is in addition to state law requirements. There's already requirements on council members with respect to contracting and conflicts of interest. The federal covers real and apparent conflicts of interest. We're defined a little bit differently. There would be a duty to disclose if there was a conflict, but again, the town's proposed use of the funds does not require us to contract with another party. For instance, like a nonprofit or the city of Raleigh or someone else. So we're not necessarily going to fall under the conflicts of interest policy, but we still have to have one. And if there was a situation where there was a conflict, we would have a duty to disclose that to the federal government. I will just point out that this conflict of interest policy does prohibit gifts to council members of $20 in value for single gifts and 50 for a calendar year. So you would be abiding by this policy throughout the time that we have the American Rescue Plan money and that we're spending it. And we're required to have a non-discrimination policy. So I just want to caution from the beginning, this is not the same as the Wake County Non-Discrimination Ordinance that I've talked to you about potentially opting into. This is a non-discrimination policy regarding the use of these funds, and it requires the town to comply with the Civil Rights Act, the Fair Housing Act, the Rehabilitation Act, the Age Discrimination Act, and the American with Disabilities Act. For the most part, we're already complying with these or required under certain other requirements. But again, we need to have it in one place that is readily accessible for both the public and employees that know what policies apply. For the record retention policy, we have to keep records on how all of these funds have been spent for five years after they've been spent or after you return them to the U.S. Department of Treasury. As was said earlier, we have up until December 31st of 2024 to obligate the money. So that's when you have to make that decision of how you're going to spend it. And then you have to spend it by December 31st of 2026. And then you would have to keep all of the records for five years after that. So unless we would spend all $10 million earlier, it could be an earlier timeframe on that. Again, this is in addition to our existing town policy on the retention of personnel records and the state records retention and disposal schedules for local governments. There's additional information, both from the School of Government has a microsite, and then the North Carolina League of Municipalities also has a microsite, kind of combining all of these requirements. So I know that's a lot of information on the policies. You know, but I'm happy to entertain any questions. The next step would be to put these on a future agenda for adoption by council, and that would be done in conjunction with adopting a grant project ordinance, which is another, under state law, technical way of where this money gets housed before it's expended.
Questions? I have one, and you may have covered this, but I thought I read somewhere, and maybe with the way we use it's not required, something about appointing or selecting a person who is what they call a COI, Conflict of Interest, individual, who would provide guidance or making sure that those requirements are followed. Would that apply to us, do you think, or you remember?
Right. So I think in most cases where we had to appoint someone, it's either the finance director because he's the natural person who's dealing with receipt of the funds, expending of the funds, making sure we're complying with all of our fiscal and financial policies. But to some extent where we have to provide an opportunity for someone to make a complaint or to report some type of violation, what was put in was the human resources director, because if an employee is not comfortable going to their supervisor, our personnel policy already allows that person to go to the HR director, to the human resources director, to make complaints, who would then initiate either an investigation or in conjunction with the town manager to look into it. Because we already have that sort of structure available to employees, it seemed the easiest to have the human resources director kind of deal with complaints about whether the money's being spent correctly, whether the records are being kept in the appropriate potential. And then I think the town attorney is in there for some compliance issues or in the event that, you know, perhaps there would be a question about how the finance director is doing it, that there'd be another avenue. But that's one of the federal requirements, is to make sure that there's some accountability. There's, so that there's a complaint process and also a protection process for whistleblowers, that they can't be retaliated if they would bring forward a potential misuse of the federal money.
Okay, yeah, that was the next question. You just covered it. There's, I know there's a whistleblower provision in what I read there, sure enough. Okay, council questions for the attorney based on this presentation? We're going to be asked to approve the policy or resolution here in a few minutes. Phil, anything?
When do you think you're going to have this ready for the technical cap?
So the policies, unless you would want to change anything in those, are essentially ready now with the caveat that these are the policies in order to us, to get us to be able to use the money. These are not necessarily the policies that council may want to decide how the money is spent, other than what's been proposed in this year's budget. So when it comes back, what I would be asking you to do is adopt a resolution that outlines each of these policies, and then they're attached to it, basically.
Okay, yeah.
It could be as early as the 6th, or it could be a later agenda. It's just that the longer you wait, you don't have the option of using the money.
Record about it.
Sorry.
Right.
Or for anything else that you've already committed, use it for like, some of the initiatives out of the council retreat.
Yeah, but we have a, I mean, we've committed. So the grant project ordinance, the way I'm reading it, that is executed simultaneously with this document. And in that, we could have some preliminary projects that we've already approved, right?
I'll defer to Mr. Beck on that.
It's like, yeah, reading number three, under procedures. No funds may be obligated or expended before final written approval by the town manager, provided the request for funding is included in the grant project ordinance, which you mentioned, adopted concurrently with the town's ARP policies, which is what we're looking at right now. No further council approval will be required. So that's sort of our approval of these policies concurrently with the grant project ordinance would be the approval for those initial projects. And then we'd have to then, for any other expenditures, have to design some other guidelines and procedures separately.
Just to, just to make clear, the grant project ordinance, excuse me, is going to show that the town is spending the money on salary and benefits.
Okay, so that all captures that.
Right. That's just tied to the reporting to the treasury. But as far as how the money is actually spent, once council makes those decisions, that would be a separate, you know, budget amendment process where we would just be amending the normal operating budget or setting up a capital project fund, you know, depending on what the direction was that council wanted to go with that money. But as far as these policies, the ordinance, that's just for the revenue replacement strategy of spending on salary and benefits.
So if we were to use any of the ARP funds in this budget cycle, we would then present budget amendments to us in June for the things that we said we wanted to spend that money on. Is that correct?
If you wanted to spend the money before June 30th of this year, or in next year's proposed budget?
In this year's, we want to allocate it for this year's budget, or would it go into next year's budget as part of the budget?
After July the 1st. I mean, the budget amendments are after July the 1st.
So we just include it in this budget?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
I got it now. Okay. And then the other expenditures of money, we would have to, as a council, come up with a procedure outside of this procedure, right?
Yes. This is just to get the necessary policies in place that we're compliant with the ARPA guidelines. You know, the supplanting takes place later, and then there's a decision for council at that point. I mean, it can happen at any point in the process, but there's a decision to be made later for council on how they actually want to spend these funds and what the priorities are for them. So
That language we should put in this document, that the council, I mean, that, I mean, it should be written somewhere, the council will make the decision on the expenditure of the funds, right?
I think that's in the policy documents I read, I thought.
It just, yeah, I mean, it gets a little, you know, it gets a little messy and things kind of get muddied because we're talking about, for reporting purposes, this is what we have to do. But in reality, we're going to have another process to determine how we spend the money. I think it's, I don't know that it has to be, right, I think it's clear to staff that, you know, it's going to have to come back at some point soon for a council-led discussion on priorities for use of the funds. So other than what, you know, has been earmarked in the proposed budget and some of those council initiatives from the retreat, those are the only things that we've, you know, received any sort of guidance on that may be an acceptable use of the funds. Anything beyond that, you know, I think we were planning to come back with that initial list that was presented to council and received some feedback from council on as far as proposed uses, and then have further dialogue about that.
There are certain things we've got to do to be in compliance with the federal guidelines, but after that, the rest is optional. And you've told us that you want a policy on how we spend it even after we do this. So
And my preference is that for this money, it would, everything would have to be approved by council. I was just, and meeting whatever guidelines we come about. And since we're adopting these policies, it would seem to be like the default policies for the program, right? So
Well, any, anything that's not in the budget that's going to be adopted that begins July 1, would have to come back to council through a budget amendment. I mean, that's the, at the least, that would have to happen. So there is, you know, a mechanism in place to make sure council is aware of any funds that are spent because we would have to amend the budget to do that beyond, like I said, what was approved in the initial budget that starts July 1. So there's a mechanism for that already. But, you know, like we said, or like Mr. Dickerson said, there's a, there's a plan to have a larger discussion on the ARP direction with those funds in the future.
And this is like a, a half at all. I'm just looking, it kind of explicitly says that no further town council approval will be required. So it's almost like thrown in there very specifically.
That's what the federal process, once we do that, then none of that, none of that comes into play.
That was my question, like, do these, are these aren't the default process for how we spend our money at all? It's basically sitting in a bank account until we figure out how we want to spend it.
Right. This is just to document our compliance with the federal guidelines. And we'll report, you know, we spend it on salary and benefits, which, you know, it ties into all this because it's already budgeted and everything. But yes, there will be, you know, some other process we will go through as far as determining how the funds are actually spent. Like I said, they're just going to sit in the account for now.
Okay. I hope we can start that because I want us to get moving on it.
I would note if we, and I think it's the last statement in the policy, Mr. Beck, and I'm sure you're aware of it. It says, "Questions about the policy? Any questions about the policy should be referred to the finance director, who is in charge of administering, enforcing, and updating the policy itself." So you would be the point person as relation to the policy issues. Okay.
I think, as I said earlier, is if you want to amend that specific policy when you've decided the priorities, you know, we certainly can go forward and amend it, but it may be cleaner to do a separate policy because again, if we get audited, they're going to be looking at this with respect to how specifically the federal funds were utilized initially.
Let me see if other council members have a question. Ms. Behring, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Okay. Mr. Singleton?
Understand it, I think. This is just the set of policies to abide by that we can actually start talking, discussing our own policies on how to spend the money.
I mean, these policies would probably make more sense if we were using the money in a different way. If we were paying contractors directly for things, then, you know, we would have to fill in many more record keeping boxes about how that, we'd have to do sub- we'd have to do a lot more policies also. But, so a lot of this may seem like it's unnecessary, but it's required for the federal award terms and conditions. It doesn't exactly fit the way we're using, you know, because we're using the money in a very narrow category.
Anything, Phil? So as I understand it, after this presentation, then at our June 6 meeting, the idea is to bring this back for council for adoption of the policies. Am I right?
There's consensus of council that you're okay with the policies as they are now. It could come back as early as the 6th.
What's sort of the timeline for creating, because basically, we're creating as a fund. And so the question is, what's the timeline for, and what is staff envisioning as the process for coming up with the guidelines for that fund?
Well, that's something we're going to be working on after the budget is approved. Well, that's something we're going to be working on after the budget is appro, we have a template, and we have someone that has some experience in creating those, so, you know, within, well, I don't even want to throw out a time, that's dangerous. I'll let.
It's, it's the next priority after the budget's approved, so that's tied on our priority list for the summer.
So would you be in the position, sort of in the fall, to be looking more concretely at?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I would envision even a little earlier than that.
Before that.
I think that we could have some, some preliminary discussions and some drafts in the August timeframe.
And we, I mean, and we already have a template of some proposed items to spend it on, it just broadens that list.
As I understand it, no vote or anything required at night, other than basically the agreement that this item should come back on the June 6 agenda for approval or adopting of the policy, right? Okay. All right, any other questions, council? Okay, hearing none, thank you, thank you both. I used to work for the federal government, and I know there are a lot of rules and regulations that have to be complied with, so. Item number two, now, Mr. Treisenberg, are you up? Or, excuse me, is it Mr. Johnson?
Treisenberg, yeah, the street stub.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to the streets, but I think Mr. Johnson is after this.
Sorry, I thought it was the other way. Well, for those who are on the Public Works Committee, this should be, I think, a little shorter presentation, but I'm sure there'll be just as much discussion. But we do have a little PowerPoint to, to guide us through. For those of you who weren't there, we just kind of dissected the, the policy at our, at our presentation there and make sure we were covering every, every aspect of it. But this is a proposal for a policy on completion of street stubs. The policy as drafted is divided into four sections. There's a purpose statement in which we expressly focused on framing the question, what we felt was the most relevant question, and that was really about when stubs should not be completed. And then we also talked about the need overall, which focused a lot on pulling existing language out of past UDOs, past comprehensive plans and transportation plans, as well as books of best practices in the planning field. And then we also, the crux of it is really about the exemptions then as to when shouldn't a stub be completed. So, just to talk a little bit about the intent of the policy, we felt that it's important to, that the policy acknowledges that stubs fulfill or fulfilled a purpose and/or regulatory requirement at the time that it was originally approved, and so that should not be discounted. And then the second, that recognizing over time significant changes in conditions may occur, just like with future land use plans and zoning decisions, transportation recommendations and things of that nature may occur over time, again, because things change. Things don't always develop exactly as we intended. Then third, to try and establish some objective criteria under which a public street stubs connection shall not be completed. And so there, we really tried to focus on kind of establishing the difference between what would be considered livable streets versus others. And then finally, to provide for alternative connection requirements when a public street connection is not made, so trying not to ignore the fact that just because the roadway itself isn't pushed through doesn't mean that maybe a sidewalk or a bike path might not be appropriate. So in talking about, you know, reasons why stubs are required in the first place, there's a number of different things that can come into play, just basic ensuring of adequate ingress and egress to developments and between developments. Sometimes it's required because you have to have access to an otherwise landlocked parcel. They can also be provided when block lengths start to get excessive, and so in the future, you're going to need that, that intersecting street to, to carve up the block length, to meet the connectivity index that's proposed in the UDO, which ensures just a very basic level of connectivity, and then also to potentially fulfill a transportation plan recommendation. Talked about those things within the policy. But again, overall, the goal is for this to try to get us what we call kind of top-notch connectivity. It gives you alternate travel paths, it reduces travel time and distances, but it also maintains a residential quality of life. And then it also, this is something that I think is kind of flies below the radar a little bit sometimes, but one of the main purposes is that we're trying to maintain capacity of thoroughfare and collector streets and their intersections. You know, as development happens along these major, you know, thoroughfares, if we're throwing every trip out onto those thoroughfares, then we're just adding to the congestion because everything has to go through it. You know, if there's 100 trips here and 100 trips there that don't have to get out on those thoroughfares, then we are managing to conserve some of that capacity. And again, as we all know, the funding for these thoroughfares and collectors is little and far between. So I know it's, it's, represents one extreme, but in some respects, it is very symbolic of, we, we could, we could really put Timber Drive at the top of that graphic, and Highway 50 on the east, and Buffalo on the south, and Aversboro on the west. There's just not any other ways to get through except through Heather Park, which would kind of bring it down a little bit. The graph, right, you know, gives you a shorter distance, it's not as direct. Again, that's highly, highly, what's the word I'm looking for? Optimistic in terms of its connectivity, but you will note that the illustration does implement a lot of jogs and, and turns. Some of the things that we did want to, you know, just focus on as well is that, you know, public safety response, it is a very, a very real and valid concern. It feeds directly into their ratings, and which directly feeds into insurance premiums. So again, starting in the top left, that's about as connected as you could ever possibly get. The blue area shows you a specific distance of about four and a half blocks, whatever that would equate to in a measurement. And so the distance from the red dot here, you can get, whoops, I forget, this is not in the, not in the program, so I can't use the pointer. But the distance from the red dot to the edge of the blue lines in this quadrant, you can get to all of those places with that kind of street layout. Adding this radial axis road gets you more coverage. Then you move into a, just a perfect grid without any radial streets. This is the coverage you end up with. In the lower right here, we still have good overall connectivity, but there's not as much of it, and so again, you see the distance that can be covered, or the area, same distance traveled starts to get much, much smaller. And then you start introducing cul-de-sacs and even less connectivity, and the amount of area covered is, is even smaller. And I, at first, when I looked at this graphic, I was trying to figure out why this blue area counted in, but the area across the street did not. I'm assuming from, from this is that the lots are actually accessible off of this internal street where the cul-de-sacs are. So these homes are probably, if there's homes in here, they're backing up to this street, but to actually get to the front, you would need to go through this way. So again, just kind of gives you a, a graphic representation of just how much your ability to cover an area declines as your connectivity is reduced. So we tied this in with the, the engineering manual for streets in stormwater that you're going to hear about. Within that manual, we've been very clear about defining the different types of streets, from major thoroughfare all the way on down. And what we kind of arrived at was your major local street and your minor local streets are really intended to have the individual driveway serviced to, to residential lots. So you're not anticipating, you know, high volumes there, you don't want high volumes on those kind of streets because you have people potentially backing out of their driveways, and that creates conflict points. So within the street, the street manual, we identify that anything above 1,500 vehicles per day really needs to be designed like a minor collector. It's volumes under that that should be served with either, either major local or minor local streets. And again, with the emphasis on those streets being able to provide access to those individual driveways. So if you kind of think of that as, as a threshold and a dividing line. Gabby and I went back and looked at research over decades. This is not a, a new topic by any stretch of the imagination, there's good research that goes all the way back into the 50s and 60s. And they really tried to focus on, for the residential part, how much traffic can be on these local streets before they start to become unlivable. And so when you do the research and you look on livable streets and traffic volumes, you can actually find quite a bit of, of research that's been done and published. Over those decades, that number has generally gone anywhere from 600 to 6,000 vehicles per day. The most recent Institute for Transportation Engineering journal article that we could find puts that livability at less than or equal to 1,200 vehicles per day, which is roughly one car every 30 seconds. So I thought about pausing here and having a gap of 30 seconds, just so we could realize how long 30 seconds is, but I don't think I'll do that. But, but the point is, is that one car every 30 seconds is not, it's, I think it's hard to argue that that's unreasonable. When it starts to get above that, then, then yes. So within the policy right now, as it's drafted, we currently are using that 1,500 threshold, but I think staff, we would be open to potentially putting that up at the 1,200, which would essentially be 80% of, of that expected capacity. I think that would, would essentially give us a little bit of wiggle room, so that when a connection is made, if it ends up being a little bit more intense, we've got some, we've got some room to play with. So in looking at exemptions, we identified excessive traffic, which we kind of just alluded to. There may be environmental considerations, and then there may be a situation where it's really just a matter of not making redundant connections. So in looking at excessive traffic, we've talked about this one a lot, and we were encouraged to kind of have some visuals to think about as part of this discussion. Here's, here's Cloverdale and Tryon Road, which currently is carrying about 9,700, and let's just say 10,000 or a little over, as it works its way to the east. And then you've got Garner Road here going north-south with probably about 12,000 to 15,000 cars per day, that's really starting to max out its capabilities as a two-lane road. And again, when looking at, at the, at the traffic research, folks, studies have shown that folks really start to look for that alternative route when their speed drops to half of what the normal through speed should be. So on a 45 mile an hour road, when they start hitting below 25, right around 23 miles an hour, they're going to start looking for, for that alternative route. And given that, you know, Northview Street is only 860 feet from that signal, I know it's not uncommon during the most heavily traveled parts of the day for that traffic backup to go much further than that. So that's definitely a situation then where folks, you know, would, would be looking to make that alternative if that alternative was there. So this, we feel, would definitely be one of those scenarios where you would be pushing substantial amounts of traffic onto that alternative route that would put you well over that 1,200 threshold. You've probably got, I'd say, close to between 30 and 40 homes along there, just on their own, they generate anywhere from 300 to 400 trips per day. So the last thing you want to be doing is quadrupling that traffic on that street. Then there may be environmental considerations. We've talked too about, I think, this is Mahler's Creek, you've got Timber Drive crossing up here at the top, you've got 50 coming down parallel, and then New Bethel Road coming across. We know that both the Timber Crossing and the New Bethel Crossing require bridges. The floodplain doesn't get any smaller between those two. It, it stays a pretty consistent width. And so we, we can pretty well assume that any crossing in between there is also going to require a bridge. Is a bridge worth the expense of being able to move 1,200 vehicles from one side to the other? Probably not, given, given the cost and expense, it's probably not going to. And especially when you do have a higher order street, Ackerman Road, that would be in that same general vicinity, we're going to want to put our resources there to trying to achieve that crossing, which would carry, you know, five figures worth of traffic from one side to the other, as opposed to these little residential stubs that occur in some of the subdivisions up here. If it were a case where, you know, the stream just requires a culvert, that's a whole lot different, but we could get at that again through the subdivision design process and the developers talking with the folks that permit those things to make that determination as to whether it could be done with a culvert or whether that bridge is going to be required. Then finally, you may have, again, a situation where it just appears to be highly redundant. So we threw the Greenbrier case in here. Presently, with this parcel undeveloped, there's actually three stubs to it. And so how then do you kind of prioritize, assuming that these, that these connections completions are not needed to satisfy the other basic criteria? How do you determine then potentially which ones do get connected and which ones don't? So we, we built in three kind of priorities to break that down. The first thing that you would look at under the proposal would be whichever one is expected to generate the le, the least amount of traffic, whichever one is going to be, you know, least impactful to the neighbors. Assuming that, you know, there's not a good estimation or a good model showing that one is being used more than the other, and it's essentially a tie, then we might look at the second criteria, which is which stub is most complete? Which one has the curb and gutter, which one has the sidewalk? That's, that's the one that then we would want to potentially look at. In this case, if all three of these weren't otherwise required and we were looking at them all individually, three and one are built, there's no sidewalk, and I don't think any curb and gutter either, so one and three would actually be equal to each other. Two is not built, it's a paper right-of-way. It's also the one that we would expect to have the most traffic since it's, it's the straighter shot. So then, if one and three are still equal, then the tiebreaker is kind of which ones the shortest stub? Which one's going to generate the shorter block length? So in this case, if all three were equal and we were still deciding which one would be connected, then we would end up in this scenario with number one. Not to say that anything would not happen at number three, because number three would actually exceed the maximum length for a permanent turnaround. So there would have to be something done to number three to allow the larger vehicles and fire apparatus to be able to turn, since they would otherwise have to back up more than 150 feet. And then finally, after all that said and done, and let's say, you know, that the connection or the completion is not required, then do we look at providing sidewalks and other types of things? And this was just one scenario of having a park nearby, and it's kind of hard to see, but there is an interior trail system. There's actually a little driveway in here to a parking area, and I think there's some kind of outlet here, but there's no connections into the adjoining neighborhood. So there's actually a cul-de-sac that comes off of this street, and so if you lived here to take a pedestrian route, you would actually have to go all the way around. So are there opportunities to take these cul-de-sacs when the development comes in and propose, you know, that pedestrian connection into the park, or there might be another neighborhood on the other side? And rather than have, you know, the kids visiting their classmates, being able to take a much shorter route rather than going in this lengthy circuitous manner? So where we can, again, within the policy, if we're having to construct a bridge over a significant stream, probably not going to go there either. You might pursue some rec and trail funds for that if it's deemed really important. But again, if you can accomplish that with a short footbridge or something like that, then by all means, go ahead and pursue that. So that kind of highlights the nuts and bolts of the proposed policy. Like I say, it does take the standpoint of what most of our neighboring jurisdictions around us just have an approach of you have to connect it, and they work with the design to make the best connection possible. Recognizing that we wanted to take a more nuanced approach, we start from the standpoint of assuming that the stub is going to be completed, but then recognizing that the conditions may have changed and that there may not be always the... ...absolutely be made under certain circumstances. And we've tried to give some structure and objective look at what those cases might be. So I'll stop there. If there's something that you would like me to explain in a little more detail or invite others up here to speak, we've got several department heads in the audience. This is not just a planning thing, even though I'm up here presenting it. It's not just something that I'm up here on my soapbox about from the planning department.
Okay, sure. Thank you very much. Counsel, questions for Mr. Trezenberg. Comments? Start with Mr. Vance this time.
No, I don't have any questions. Appreciate all the hard work that went into this process, but I had the opportunity to see it earlier, and I just want to say, appreciate all the hard work and how it is incorporated in with the Engineering Manual. My hat's off to all the hard work that the planning has done thus far. That's all I have.
So this did go to Public Works, is that right? Okay. Ms. Behring, do you have anything?
No, just to echo what Mr. Vance said. That was a lot of work that they have completed, and I appreciate their efforts to make it usable for us.
Okay. Mr. Dallinger?
Of course, a few questions.
All right.
Just a few. So reading the policy and comparing it then to the UDO as it's written, it seems like it's very technical, and very technical from a traffic standpoint, but not from a pedestrian standpoint. A lot of the measures are traffic-related, car-related, but not measuring the pedestrian element, which is what we see in these older neighborhoods. What I was sort of hoping to see is something that spoke more specifically to kind of very specific neighborhoods, because we sort of have a policy that I think this going forward for new development, connecting to newer developments, works very well. But when you have the Cloverdale example, you know, traffic counts was not how we rendered our sort of decision to not connect it. We sort of looked at the width of the street, how many parked cars are there in the street? There's a danger potential that's created by then creating that traffic. So 1,200 to 1,500 cars a day is more or less dangerous, depending on what street it is. I drove through Greenbrier this weekend just to drive through it. Some of those streets are just this wide, you know? And so that would be different than the Northview situation. And it sort of brought me back to thinking about, is it possible to have a policy specific to these older neighborhoods, simple criteria like street width, no sidewalks, and maybe doing almost an overlay of sorts to say, these neighborhoods don't have... They need special, even more special consideration because they're older and they'll never have sidewalks and they'll never... And the other thing is the street width, I started thinking about too. Like I said, it creates a danger of people walking in the street, kids darting in and out unseen and stuff like that. So we could add to this policy that would, again, be a good policy moving forward for 20 years, but also speak more carefully to some of these older neighborhoods that are already sort of pedestrian conduit. So they're pedestrian-friendly because they don't connect.
So we did talk about that. I would say most of, I think, most of our conversation focused on it from a need of kind of using it as a tool to identify, to hopefully help prioritize sidewalk needs. But I think in listening to you just now, in addition to that, maybe there's some kind of graduated scale of trips. Because again, an undersized street probably does have less carrying capacity. So is that number actually even lower, depending on what is there? Is it just a two-ribbon pavement? Is there on-street parking? Is there curb and gutter but no sidewalk?
That's like the danger of turning a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood into an unsafe neighborhood.
Right.
That delta, you know, people expect traffic to go through their neighborhood. You know, I lived on Sycamore. They drive down the road and they drove fast. But when you start doing these connectivity, then you're just reducing the quality of life from the pedestrian standpoint of that neighborhood. Again, it's sort of finite, the number of neighborhoods this applies to. And I almost think it'd be possible to say, well, here are the neighborhoods, and these are the ones that have stub outs that are adjacent to vacant land, you know? We could sort of be like... I don't know. I just, we've run into the problem at least half a dozen times in the past year and a half, and each time we sort of land on the side of safety for people in the neighborhood versus we need more carrying capacity.
Yeah, I think, so I think as staff, we don't disagree with that, and we support that. I think there's also, though, an acknowledgement that they're not being increased beyond what's truly livable, that there is some traffic that can potentially be added under certain circumstances, and that, you know, 50, you know, 50 trips... Well, I won't say 50, but you know, if there's 10 homes on a stub and it's generating 100 trips, you know, it's noticeable. Yes, it's a change. And so I think that's what we're trying to find, is where is that line of comfort that everybody can get? So I can see, like I say, kind of a graduated approach based on kind of what the existing street network has versus what, or maybe a better way to say is what it's deficient in, and kind of adjusting from there. And then we use our TIA process to hone in on that.
I think just with the policy and then looking at the UDO, and there's, I think, Section 8.2F, coordination with surrounding streets. There are, under F, there's a waiver for certain things about limited frontage, natural features, similar circumstances, and sort of not this other out. Almost creating an out for these certain special circumstances. And then under number four in there, local residential shall connect with surrounding streets when necessary. And then it's like, but connections shall be designed to avoid use of streets by substantial through traffic. But like, sort of giving some acknowledgement of the pedestrian safety aspect of... Because also, the speed at which the traffic comes is also changes depending on how the street is configured and the width and all those things too. So those should come to bear when you want to make an exception. Not, again, not that we should just make everything an exception, but when it looks like there could be increased speed and traffic, creating such a big delta from what it was to what it could be. So.
It doesn't, you know, the policy doesn't mandate any proactive street design stuff, but that is something that we'll be taking a lot closer, harder look at here going forward, even with the whole, like you say, making sure that it's more of a curve linear grid as opposed to just a straight grid, having those excessive block lengths where folks can pick up speed real easily, this is a straight shot. But you know, you could, there's still the option then for us to, if numbers are iffy, but there is, you know, it is really calling for a connection to be made, what can we do on the upcoming site to further, you know, discourage and hold those numbers down, whether it's putting in the mini roundabout or proactively if we know that the older subdivision has a straightaway, you know, proactively doing some other kinds of traffic calming and having that developer put that in so it's not on the town. So it still gives us that, you know? That was going to be hard to get to that level, but I think that's actually a good thing to keep flexible so that we can talk about those on a case-by-case and say, hey, you know, Joe Developer, you need to...
Let me interrupt and get a couple of other council members in this conversation, and I'll come back to you, Ms. Dallinger, if you have follow-ups. But we need to give others an opportunity if they desire to ask questions. Ms. Singleton, I'll recognize you, sure?
Yes, Mr. Member, we talked about this committee and the following of what Mr. Dallinger's talking about on the existing neighborhoods. We talked about it because Jeff brought the example. Because we talked about the Cloverdale example, we talked about the Grove Mount and Timber example, there's a couple others that were mentioned. So having dense, much highly-dense projects proposed next to an existing older neighborhood, some even with unimproved streets, some with not even curb and gutter, just a narrow street, is a big concern. And that was talked about in newer neighborhoods with curb and gutter and sidewalk on both sides, the stub out, that's reasonable. We brought Randall Road and Northview as two issues amongst several older communities. So we talked about it. I'll let Mr. Matthews go.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, anything?
I understand.
Okay. And Mr. Vance, anything?
I have nothing else to add. I've already spoken on the matter.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Dallinger, any other follow-up?
No, just, I think also, since we're just doing UDOs, to look at that section and make some... Talking about, again, to give you flexibility when you're talking with the developers. I'm always wary of the word "shall," even with a "but" following it. It kind of ties you sometimes when there needs to be more discretion, I think.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Behring, do you have a follow-up?
No, no questions.
Okay. I think the next consideration is placing this on a future agenda for possible adoption. Counsel, satisfied with that as our next action? Hearing no opposition. Okay. Mr. Manager, will this come back at our next meeting or maybe?
Yes, yeah, we can put that on consent. I think we're talking about putting it on consent next meeting. If everybody's okay with it or any adjustments.
If we make amendments, I'm not, you know, I don't have any heartburn about presenting those if need be.
Appreciate a little more pedestrian language, just to, again...
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Trezenberg. I believe we finished with you this evening. I know you've been waiting, and I, Mr. Johnson, out there is anxious, so I'll recognize him next as well. For Engineering Manual and Standard Detail Updates, and I've seen a manual that I have now.
Good evening. Ms. Harrison and I are going to tag-team this presentation to bring you the new Engineering Manual, which also includes Street and Stormwater Standard Detail Updates. The purpose of the new manual was to provide a supplement in being done in conjunction with the upcoming Unified Development Ordinance, to provide more specific engineering design information and details to ensure the development plans are designed and constructed in accordance with Town of Garner specifications. As we mentioned in Public Works Committee, currently, we do not have such a manual. We reference a lot of different types of manuals from streets. We would refer to the NC DOT Street and Subdivision Manual. For Stormwater, we did have a storm drain policy, but there were some things that weren't covered in it adequately as adequately as we would like. For erosion control, we refer to Wake County. For water and sewer, we refer to Raleigh Water. There's a lot of information, a lot of places to find information, and what our goal was to try to put this into a one-stop-shop location so that developers and engineers have ease of access to the information, and it's clear when they're preparing plans for the Town of Garner that they're starting off on the right foot. So our agenda is to talk about work completed to date, and then I will talk about the Streets' Manual overview, and then turn it over to Ms. Harrison to talk to you about the Stormwater overview. And then we'll talk a little bit about the new, some of the new standard detail updates that we have, other resource documents, and then next steps. So work completed to date, this began about a year ago when we put together an initial work plan and budget with Stewart Incorporated, which was working with planning on the overall UDO process. We did have a certain budget on this, and we didn't know exactly how far that would take us. So we started that exercise with Stewart, and they began reviewing, we began reviewing our old details and trying to find out what our needs were, where we had some missing gaps in information we wanted to add. And then they brought back to us a first draft, sort of an outline, following some research in September of last year. And then they delivered to us a first draft of the manual in October. Town staff went through that information. They brought back to us a second draft in November, and then they delivered the second, I'm sorry, second draft in January. And then about that time, we realized that the budget that we had for this exercise had sort of come to a conclusion. So staff took upon ourselves to try to take it to the finish line. Several staff members in engineering as well as staff members in planning helping to try to make sure that we're cross-referencing everything properly to the UDO. So it's had a lot of eyes on it. And then just last week, we presented to Public Works Committee and then bringing to you tonight. A brief overview, the Stormwater Manual is sort of... A brief overview, the stormwater manuals sort of split into two parts for streets and stormwater. The street section includes information on how to get street plans and permitting completed. We've also added a new right-of-way encroachment process, which was a process that we had informally in the past, and we're looking to try to tighten that process up as we see more and more utility contractors coming through. We've also added some street classifications and more information for developments on when they're developing new subdivisions to kind of understand what types of streets we're looking for in certain areas based on vehicles per day, pedestrian access and needs and so forth. We've got more street design guidelines and many of those are referencing federal or state standards, not necessarily new standards that we're preparing, but sort of piggybacking on industry norms. And then street materials and construction specifications for contractors. And then for stormwater, we've got a stormwater requirement summary, more details on stormwater control measures. We're actually looking at moving towards third-party inspections and maintenance. Up until this point, the Town of Garner has been handling the inspection of every stormwater control measure, even those that are maintained by third parties privately. And so we're looking to put measures in place where that, those inspections can be taken taken place by the responsible owners and then the town simply reviewing that information as is provided. We've also got more information for stormwater design layout, calculation standards, and then similar to streets, storm drainage materials, construction specifications. And then the last part of the manual is basically an appendix where we've got sort of a catch-all for not only the street and standard, street and stormwater standard details, but also some of our prior storm drainage policy that's already been previously adopted, the O and M manuals that I talked about previously, more information on the encroachments, more checklists and bonding information that we've been using up until now but haven't actually had in a manual, and then other helpful links and references. So starting with the streets section, one of the, this, I know you've got a link in your backup, I'm just going to kind of hit some of the hot topics, but one of the largest items that we added was a new street classification table. And the objective of this was to sort of provide, I know it's hard to read on the screen with the tiny print, but sort of a catalog of all the street sections that we have in the Town of Garner and what we're expecting to see from those, whether, with respect to average volume, how, what the speed limit's supposed to be, how they're, how we're supposed to handle bicycle accommodations, whether a street's supposed to have a median or not, driveways, sidewalks, parking markings, all that sort of thing. So it sort of just lays out everything so when a developer's coming in and doing a subdivision, they can kind of understand what you're going to see on each street within their subdivision based on where it's at. Then we had some new street design guidelines. The graphic on the lower left is sort of a new, it's a piggyback off of the federal ASHTO, what we call the Green Book for horizontal and vertical design criteria. So basically just providing, based on the, on the street classification, how we're expecting them to design that for both horizontal and vertical alignment. And then we've got other tables, such as the ones on the right, related to stopping site distance or intersection site distance. Again, some of these taken from the Raleigh Street Design Manual that are also piggybacking off of federal standards that are used across the country. I mentioned to you earlier that we've got a new right-of-way encroachment process. So we have developed, we've kind of went out and looked at how encroachment processes are handled in many jurisdictions around the county and state. And we found that it would be best to have this split up into two different styles, one for major encroachments, which are more of your larger impacts, permanent hardscape, furniture, streetscapes, utilities, irrigation from homeowners that come in and retrofit an irrigation system on their property, but have to encroach into the town right-of-way, usually that grass strip in front of the sidewalk, telecommunication, landscaping. And then minor encroachments are more like temporary items or smaller encroachments, such as outdoor merchandise, temporary structures, movable street furniture, building awnings and lighting, some signage. And we've also gone through and taken this time, we originally done some minor updates to the street details in 2019. What we've done now is gone back and we didn't do a lot of changes to the street details, but we did find a lot of additional details we wanted to add for other street-related items, giving you just a couple snapshots here. Detail 4.08 is a new greenway detail. We had one for on-street greenways or multi-use paths, but we didn't have anything in there for more like your trail-type greenway style paths. So we've got a new deal detail for that. We added a CMU for the new mailboxes that are required now in subdivisions. We didn't really have a detail for that and we were getting sort of different details with every developer or engineering firm that came through. So what we did was we kind of took details that we felt were the best for the Town of Garner and created our own, and so that can be used on every development and looks the same. We also added some traffic calming, which has been a hot topic for quite a while now. In addition to sort of the speed tables that we usually use on more retrofit projects, we've also added several new designs for trying to, and this is not something that we are just now starting to implement, we're looking at some of these subdivisions that come in through new development and trying to make sure that we don't create some of the same problems we have today in some of our older neighborhoods, some of these long straightaways that that are just sort of, you know, they're going, they're kind of made to fail when it comes to excessive speeding. So what we do is we, we're looking at alignments and when we do have situations where we feel that we may have some excessive speeding, then we, we're looking for developers and engineers to put in other measures such as median islands or curb bump outs, even many, many traffic circles. So we didn't have details for those types of devices, but we've now added those in so that they can be sort of similar and used in more proactive approach. And I'll turn it over to Leah to talk about the stormwater.
Hello, good to see you.
All right, so picking up where Chris left off, just to start with an overview of what we've included in the stormwater section here. So a lot of, similar to the streets, a lot of what we've done is compile a lot of the different sets of rules that we have into one comprehensive place. So for example, we, you know, we have the water, supply watershed area within our jurisdiction. So we've included some overview of those rules as well as the nitrogen control policy because we're in the noose watershed and our requirements as far as detention of stormwater. So we've included those as an overview with references to our longer policies that we follow. In addition to that, we have more details about actual stormwater design, the layout of systems, calculation standards, and the way we expect for things to be designed and installed within the town. So for a piece that is a little bit new, we don't necessarily have right now a place where all of our design guidelines are listed somewhere for developers to follow. Similar to what Chris said about streets, we have a lot of different references that we might use to refer developers to and standards that we follow, but we don't have them comprehensively in one location. So I know there's some examples of information here, which you can't see the details of nor probably really care to, but things like, you know, how much cover should there be on a pipe? What size of storm are we designing culverts to within the town? How are we going to design our inlets? How much gutter spread is acceptable on a town street? So all of those specifics of design and construction that everybody needs to know before we design and construct anything. Then for stormwater control measures within the town, Chris had mentioned that we are transitioning currently to a new system of inspecting these. Up until this point, even privately owned stormwater control measures within our jurisdiction, we have been inspecting as town staff. And town staff is our one stormwater employee that is doing that along with a lot of other things. So as we grow, we've basically become about the only municipality left who does that in-house. And so we are transitioning to the way that it is generally done is to require a third-party inspection. So the owner is responsible for hiring a responsible, knowledgeable person that has a certification to inspect those devices, have the inspection completed, and provide us with an inspection report. And then following the same maintenance that they would have to follow that we would indicate from our inspection. So along with that endeavor, we have developed new operations and maintenance checklists for each of the different stormwater devices that may be installed on different properties and the actual inspection report that they will have to submit to us. So we have new documentation for all of that to kind of streamline the process moving forward. We did have letters go out just last week notifying all the property owners that this is the direction that we're headed and providing these reference documents for them and providing them some resources of how and where they can get these inspections done. Similar to the street details, we do have some updated stormwater standard details. Several of the details, you can see in the upper right-hand corner, there's a chart. We have chosen to reference a lot of the NC DOT stormwater details that we were already using anyway, rather than just paste them on our own block. We've just referenced them and added any notes that we want for developers or builders to know in the way that we want them to be used. And then we've maintained some of the more specialty details that we want to have that we might not have an appropriate DOT equivalent for to include those as well. And some, some other pieces that we included in the manual are different design and construction resources. So the screenshot there is an, the first page of our construction drawing checklist. This is something we've been using for a few years now with all of our submittal requirements of a construction drawing set when it comes in. We've included information about submitting ASBILTS. That's a new checklist that we have created that has specific requirements for how ASBILTS are to be submitted and how we will approve them. We also included engineering bond requirements so that developers know how to bond items that aren't completed when they are constructing their infrastructure. So next steps from here, following this, we would be happy to receive any feedback that you all may have. We will address any comments that come out of this and would like to bring this back to council for adoption, to effectively implement this starting in July. We would welcome any questions you might have.
Hey, thank you so much. Good report. Engineering department's been pretty busy with all this, I can see. Phil, you have anything?
Sir.
Mr. Singleton?
I've got a couple of questions. I'll email them to ask specific, getting into weed stuff.
Okay, all right. Let me see, Ms. Dillinger, before I go to you, I go to the virtual people here. Ms. Barringer?
I have no questions. I'd just like to say we need to take a break in a few minutes.
Okay, I had that in mind after we finished this item here. Mr. Vance, anything?
Yes, I would just like to continue to say that good work from the engineering department in pulling, pulling this document together for it being a one-stop shop for the developers to go to, to get the standards as to what we were looking for. Hopefully will minimize the time in getting things done. And also, and I believe that it's a great foundational document for new employees coming into the engineering department. They will be able to look at where we are and be able to look at what documents we're using to get things done. So my hats off to the engineering department and all the hard work they've done.
Make sure. And Mr. Dillinger?
Just good job and good to see the roundabouts. He designed some of my favorite roundabouts in Raleigh. I was excited to hear about that. You know, just good job. I would just say, I know that the UDO is sort of continually moving and I didn't bring my copy and I made my notes, but I think on page 12, it references 8.3 when it's supposed to reference 8.2. It's like references sewage and it's doing connectivity and there's another one on that. So again, I know all these documents are in constant motion, so I'd make sure all those references are correct, but it's a lot and it's good, it's good work, so.
Okay, and I would just note that I was pleased when I came into my office and found on my desk this engineering manual. I guess I'm a little old school, but I thought everything was being put in electronic version these days. I didn't know if I'd ever see a hard copy manual anymore, but I do have one and I'll try to hang on to it and keep it. Thank you very much.
We will be, we will be making this all information with the July effective date. That'll give us a month to roll out a new webpage that'll have all this information online. All the details will be available in multiple different formats and so forth, so I think it'll be helpful.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other question, I believe? Let's see, we bring this.
Speaking of enjoying, when we got this last week, of course, as we know, Mr. Vance is engineer, he was like a kid in a candy store. I'm going to put, take him to work, he'll look all through it. I told staff, I was going to give him two or three and keep one of work and one of hunger and one in the car. Because he was so excited about all this stuff. Wanted to relay that information on the, I reckon, engineering talk.
Yep, I'm sure that's true.
We are a different breed.
Well, thank you. This is receivers information, provide feedback, so we've had a chance to do that. Anything, John?
I was just going to confirm that it was okay to place this on the June 6th agenda. So as Chris said, he's got the full month, they've got the full month to prepare for a rollout for July 1.
And I thank you for your patience. You were about the last one again. I don't know how many times you've been last. I try to move that around a little bit, but I don't do a very good job at it. But thank you both. We appreciate the work you did, sure enough. Well, you heard one of our council members speak to the issue of a, of a quick break here, I guess, and we do have a couple other things, managers report and council report. So, and I want to recognize Ms. Gabby out there, who used to be on our staff here. Are you here to make any presentation or no?
Still on, still on our staff.
Oh, excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry.
Blew that one.
I'll have to go home and apologize to a lot of people tonight. Yeah, okay, sorry about that. I'm confused.
Mr. Mayor, she was on maternity leave, okay?
Excuse me, yeah, okay. But who's, well, I'll get into that later on. There's somebody else I had in mind, I'm sorry. Okay. I guess we better take a quick recess maybe at this time, would be a good thing to do. So let's take a, let's take a 10-minute recess and I'll go apologize to her again.
Got to go take a break, we can apologize. I gotta take a break, so I can apologize.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for getting back in place, and I hope you enjoyed your break, and I believe we can finish up our, the rest of our agenda in expeditious fashion, that'll be our goal anyway, so. I believe, Mr. Manager, we are circling back to you under manager reports is the next item.
Yes, Mayor, Town Council, you have in your agenda packet the pending agenda schedule, agenda schedule for next month, and a number of things that you heard tonight will end up on June, one of the June meetings, so you'll see those again pretty soon. The only other thing I wanted to report is that we will be starting ADA curb ramp retrofit program and working with DOT. There's a large project starting up early June that will include curb ramp improvements at dozens of intersections around Garner, and it's estimated the contractor will be working in and around Garner from early June through the end of September. And, so is that, is that a DOT? Yeah, let Chris, yeah, I'll let Chris give some more details about who will be managing the project.
Yeah, this is a DOT managed project. We've been coordinating with them, and this was a project that was, I think, on the books back in like 19 and got put on hold when they had some of the cash flow problems, and it's now back online, so they've now let the project, and I think it's Fuller, Fuller and Jones?
Clifford and Jones, yes.
It's the contractor, but basically, when we do our street resurfacing, as you may know, we also upgrade our, our ramps as we're doing street resurfacing on town streets. Well, DOT has put out basically just a curb ramp project, so it's, I think, the southern area of Raleigh and Garner. They've got different projects in different quadrants of Wake County, and so this one is going out, and the area of Garner will be starting early June through end of September, and it'll be a big improvement, so pretty much all of your major roads like Aversboro, 50, Timber Drive, they'll be going through and upgrading all the ramps to current guidelines.
Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but it also includes any intersections between a DOT street and a town street, so that ramp would get replaced as well, so it's not only at DOT intersecting DOT, so that really helps us with some of the things like off of Timber Drive and, well, a lot of places in town.
Yeah, a lot of subdivisions that tie into a state route, they're taking care of the ones that are inside their right-of-way.
Okay, pretty good, yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay, remind me, and we sort of talked about it, and we're not going to wiffly put it off, but sort of what's our drop-dead date? Is it the second meeting in June to pass the budget?
It has to be approved by June, before July the 1st.
Well, yeah, I understand that.
But our meeting, we have a meeting on June the 21st?
Okay, so that would be the time. We don't usually approve that in our work session in, in that month, or I guess we could have had to, but yeah, okay.
We don't.
Okay. Alright. Okay, was that it? Was there anything else?
That's it. Well, like I was saying before, with the budget, we want to make sure we get the information in time to put a budget ordinance together that we can advertise prior to the budget being approved.
Right. Okay, and the comment window is still open, I'm sure? Is that right? No, is that closed?
It's closed.
It closed on May, May 20th, Mayor.
May 20th, okay, thank you. Alright. Alright, let's see. Ms. Attorney, did you have anything else? Or, okay, and either one of the assistant managers have anything to report? None? Alright. Council reports, I'll go with our virtual folks tonight first. Ms. Behringer, anything?
Just one thing, I want to just add my support to Mr. Singleton's remarks about the traffic calming devices on Pool Drive, Drive and Main Street. I know that those are not, maybe they don't meet the high-level requirements, but we need them badly. Those, both of those roads need them, whether, whether it's noted very often or not, they need them, and I'd like to add my support to that, that measure.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Vance?
I have nothing to add outside of support for the traffic calming devices on the noted roads of Pool Road and also the Main Street.
Okay, thank you.
That is it.
Okay. Mr. Behringer?
I'll agree with them as well, and that'll be my only comment for the evening.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Singleton?
I'm going to mention something I've been in contact with staff about, and I don't know if any of you have driven out to South Garner High School some days, but they have a large amount of people who like to park on the side of the road, and then back and forth, and I know it's out of our jurisdiction per se, and Mr. Hodges may have an update, but it's just, they don't want to pay the parking, but I'm not talking about two or three cars, I'm talking 20, 30, 40 cars, and it can't be safe on the side of Clifford Road to have cars parked on the side of the road. So I hope that if there's something we need to do to request the DOT to put no parking out there or something, it's just, it's not a safe situation to have the kids walking on that road, as far as some of them might walk. Any update, or just, I know at one time you hadn't heard back from the principal.
We still not heard back from the principal, so I'll, now that school was going to be ended, I was going to reach out one more time and try to have an opportunity for him to respond when, when school was not really busy, but we have not had a response, which was disappointing. We, Jeff Trezenberg did reach out to DOT last week after we were talking about this again, to look at a different, another type of strategy, which just was to see, would there be a way that we could get an allowance to annex Clifford Road? Typically, we don't annex the road until both sides have come into the city limit, so you may remember when Amazon came in, we didn't have the section of Joan Sausage in front of Amazon until the annexation of Beacon Commerce Park. We've reached out, I don't think Jeff's gotten a response, but just to see if there is a way that we might could, because so much of Clifford will be in the town limits on one side or the other soon, and just see, is there any way to have an exception, and at what level does it have to be approved, whether it's all the way at the DOT board? So that's our next avenue that we're trying. We're still going to try to make contact with the school, but I, I don't know, they don't really have any, any, I don't think, ability to control it much, but we would like for them to play some role if they could in helping discourage people from doing it. Also, Mr. Bamford was helping us with it and observed on, on some mapping, there's some, some hash lines through the, the widened asphalt that was added to Clifford that almost looks like they are there to delineate parking spaces, so I think it could be that someone probably started doing that, possibly even thinking those were delineated parking spaces on the asphalt, so we've got to look and see if that's contributing to this at all, as not contributing to the parking on the grass shoulder on the other side, but it could be where some of our problems started, so. We don't have a lot of tools available to us, but we are trying to follow up on all the ones we can find.
The reason I bring it up is the first time somebody out there gets hit or injured, they can say, "What was the town of Garner doing?" And it's like, "Whoop, it's not our jurisdiction unfortunately," and, you know, I'm seeing chief out there nodding and agreeing that, you know, if it happens, it's not going to be our fault because we tried to help anyway. You would think the school system would reach out, but anyway, that's all, thank you.
I've had several emails from people who live out there with the same concerns, probably some that the chief has had as well, and it seemed like I tried to call our regional engineer, and whatever efforts I made didn't get anywhere, but if I can assist any way or use leverage of the mayor's office, I'd be happy to do that.
And I didn't mention it, but chief, chief's staff has been working on, helping us work on this issue as well.
And I can, Mr. Mayor, I'm also the liaison to the Garner Red Foundation, and the principal of Southeast Garner High School comes to those meetings, so I can speak to him as well.
Okay, that would be very helpful, I think. Okay, just a couple of things I will mention. Thank those of you who worked together to put together Memorial Day service, and some of several of our council members were there. As you may know, we received from the Purple Heart Agency, that's probably not the right name, but anyway, a nice, a nice sign, and so, you know, it's in the mayor's office right now, we need to decide where we want to put it up. Had one suggestion, maybe somewhere here at Town Hall, but also heard some recommendations regarding maybe installing it there at the Veterans Memorial, so just kind of want to throw that out to council, if you have any ideas where we could put it, I think several of you have seen it, it's about what?
It's on the information side. We can get more of those, like, if we want to put them on our gateways coming in, we're welcome to Garner, all American City, we can get them for there. We have a contact that we can get additional signs, which I think would be good.
Okay, well, would you like to install this one at the Veterans Memorial?
I think it'd be quite apropos. I mean, a weatherproof sign? Oh, yes, metal, it's a beautiful sign, yeah. It was hard to tell at a distance yesterday, so I couldn't, okay. Whatever, I mean, whoever else choose sounds reasonable.
It's about 20 by 30.
I'd say, yeah, probably, yeah. Okay. That's, that's all I have, I believe, sure enough, so unless there's anything else to come for this council, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. Did you have something else?
You have to technically adjourn both meetings.
Oh, excuse me.
Which you could do in one motion.
Yes, yes.
That's if you decide you don't want to talk about budget.
Unless you want to discuss the budget further.
Well, council, that's still before you, the continuation of the budget discussion, and we had decided whether or not we would extend that to after this meeting, so is there any thought further on, on doing that, or are you ready to circle back on that at a different time?
Right, we'll circle back. Mr. Behringer's already got his backpack ready to go, so he's ready to move on.
Let's circle back later.
I do have one comment, and we can close it.
Oh, no.
I know. We should really look at those numbers again, I, I think we're closer to the four, the five, or the four and a half, so everybody just look again and think forward, that's all.
Alright. Okay, so, let me see here, I guess I need to close out that meeting, is that right? Close out each meeting individually, Ms. Jones?
Need a motion fix one, right?
I believe so.
Alright. First, I also agree with the work that Katie did, Katie Lockhart did on the Veterans, I mean, the Memorial Days, I think I recognized her, it was well done after two years. Mr. Mayor, I'm news that we adjourned meeting number one, which is a budget meeting that started at 4:00, and meeting number two, which was a work session agenda that started at 6:00 PM, 6:15 PM.
Thank you. I believe I technically have to call the roll, or can I just declare a declination since it's virtual?
I think you can do it by consensus.
Okay, alright. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, though, and there is none, and so we'll go ahead and declare that we are adjourned from both meetings, and thank you, council, for your time, and those of you who were virtual for sticking with us there.